Okay, well, let's do this. Since we have a quorum, let's go ahead and call to order the Planning Commission for the City of Emeryville for Thursday, April twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Director Bryant, can you do the role, please?
Commissioner Chafe.
Yeah.
Commissioner Dram.
Yeah.
Commissioner Gitzoni.
Here.
Commissioner Simons is expected in a few minutes. Commissioner Zepco is also expected soon. Vice Chairman Des.
Here.
And Chair Keller.
Here.
We have a quorum of five commissioners present at the moment.
Very good. That's a quorum. Would you like to do the declaration for the remote meetings?
Sure. I would like to state for the record that this meeting is being conducted by teleconference pursuant to newly newly enacted California Assembly Bill three sixty-one. The city was previously complying with the Brown Act orders issued by the governor, which were aimed at containing the novel coronavirus and which expired on September thirtieth. This new bill gives local agencies the authority to continue to host virtual meetings until January first, two thousand and twenty-four, as long as California is under a governor declared state of emergency. In order to continue meeting subject to this exemption to the Brown Act, the planning commission must make findings by majority vote or later than thirty days after it starts using this exemption and every thirty days thereafter. And will do so at this meeting and until the governor lifts the state of emergency. City Hall is open to the public during regular business hours from nine AM to five PM, Monday through Friday. The planning and building counters have different hours. Please check or make an appointment before visiting. The agenda states that the public may view the meeting that is being live streamed online and on a TV channel twenty-seven and provide comment by submitting an online comment form, which will then be read into the record by staff. The comment form can be accessed by going to our main city of Emeryville Planning Commission webpage and clicking on the link entitled Submit an Online Speaker Card. The public also has the option of participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom and may provide public comment during the meeting using the raise your hand feature visible on your screen, or if you are calling in, press star nine. The Zoom call-in information was provided on the posted agenda as well as via e-notification and on social media. At this time, I would like to go to item three point one, which is a resolution declaring the need for the planning commission to continue to meet remotely in order to ensure the health and safety of the public. The required findings are contained in this resolution, and with your permission, Chair Keller, I would now like to ask for a motion and a second on this resolution.
Thank you, Director Brand. I'll go ahead and make the motion for the resolution. Can we have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
That was Commissioner Chafe.
Correct.
On the motion by Chair Keller and seconded by Commissioner Chafe. Commissioner Chafe.
I.
Commissioner Dram.
Hi.
Commissioner Gitzoni.
Hi.
And Commissioner Simons has joined us.
I can also say hi.
Thank you. Commissioner Zepco is still absent. Vice Chairman Des.
Hi.
And Chair Keller.
Hi.
Six eyes. The resolution is approved. Thank you.
You. Item three point two, consideration of cancellation of the June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two regular meeting schedule and scheduling a special meeting in May to discuss topics of interest and list the topics and questions to be discussed at the special meeting.
So would you, would you, would you like me to set the stage for this?
Set the stage.
Okay. So at your last meeting, you expressed interest in discussing various topics. However, those topics were not listed on the agenda. So under the Brown Act, you really weren't able to have substantive discussion about them, and some of you indicated that there were other topics unspecified that you would also like to discuss. And so the idea formed of having a special meeting to do that. I would also note that we have no items scheduled for the regular meeting on June twenty-third, so we are recommending that you also vote to cancel that meeting. We are recommending that the special meeting be sometime in the first three weeks of May. And we have suggested five possible dates that are listed in the staff report. These dates appear to not conflict with any other city meetings. And they are Wednesday, May fourth, Thursday, May fifth, Tuesday, May tenth, Monday, May sixteenth, or Thursday, May nineteenth. The meeting could start at six thirty, as is your regular time, or they could start, it could start at any other time of your choosing. Since this is a special meeting, it doesn't have to start at any particular time. So whatever time you like, on whatever day you like, is when we would propose that you have the meeting. And then, once the meeting data is set, we'd also appreciate your listing the topics that you want to discuss at the meeting, so we can list them on the agenda, so you will be able to discuss them. We've also suggested that you come up with one or more discussion questions for each topic, simply as a way of framing the discussion and helping helping get a little more out of the discussion. So, so that similar to the discussion questions that staff generally puts at the end of a staff report on a study session item, just to help focus it. So that's our suggestion. So basically, three things. We're asking you to cancel the June twenty-third meeting. We're asking you to set a date and time for the special meeting. And then, thirdly, a list of topics and question, discussion questions for each topic.
Very good. Thank you. And do you want to address these each one at a time and vote on them all at the same time, or what's?
Makes no difference to me. Maybe it would be more expeditious to do them one at a time.
Yeah, I was kind of thinking they're kind of separate issues. So do you want a motion or to?
Sure. Why don't we do, to do, why don't we start with the cancellation of the June twenty-third meeting? Just have a motion and a second and a vote on that.
Okay. So someone like to make a motion to cancel the meeting? I'll make a motion. Thank you, Commissioner Gitzoni, seconded by.
Looked like Commissioner Chafe.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yep.
All right, on cancellation of the June twenty-third meeting. Commissioner Chafe.
Hi.
Commissioner Dram.
Hi.
Commissioner Gitzoni.
Hi.
Commissioner Simons.
Hi.
Commissioner Zepco is absent. Vice Chairman Des.
Hi.
Chair Keller.
Hi.
Six eyes. The motion is approved, so we will cancel the June twenty-third meeting. Now, this is a little more takes a little more brain power for the next one, which is what date and time do you want to have the special meeting? I hope you've all consulted your calendars. I would just say from staff's perspective, it would be better for us if it were a little bit later, because May fourth and fifth are both like next week, which seems pretty quick.
I would agree with that.
And we have to put the agenda together and mail it out and everything. Of course, for special meetings, twenty, only twenty-four hours notice is required, but still, we'd like to have a little more time.
I think the commissioner would like a little bit more time to prepare as well, myself and speaking for myself. So we're looking at the tenth, the sixteenth, or the nineteenth.
That's right.
Is there a date that does not work of those three for anybody? That we can eliminate Chair, Vice Chair?
Yeah, the nineteenth of May. That's the only date that will not work for me. I'll be out of town.
Okay, and Commissioner Chafe?
I can't make the tenth.
Okay. Anyone else? I was kind of favoring the sixteenth myself. I think that's early enough, but yet it gives everyone enough time. So shall we make it sixteen? And how do people feel? Do, is this an earlier start? Work better? Like at six o'clock, or do we want to leave it at six?
Six thirty. Thirty would work for me.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's a preference, so we'll do May sixteenth at six thirty.
All right, can we have a motion on that?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
All right. On the motion by Chair Keller, seconded by Vice Chairman Des. Commissioner Chafe.
I.
Commissioner Dram.
Hi.
Commissioner Gitzoni.
Hi.
Commissioner Simons.
Hi.
Commissioner Zepco is absent. Vice Chairman Des.
Hi.
And Chair Keller.
Hi.
All right, six eyes. So your special meeting will be on Monday, May sixteenth at six thirty PM. All right, and now.
Really, can you describe what the process is for how we add items to the agenda? Again, I didn't quite catch that.
You talk about it right now.
Oh, we talked about it right now. Oh, great.
Like that. Yeah, we can't, you can't add something to the agenda after this discussion. So this is the time to put things that you want to talk about on the agenda.
So Henry, if you have something, go ahead and lead us off.
Sure. Okay, so there's two items I'd like to add to the agenda. Um, one topic I'd like to add is including jobs, housing imbalance numbers with every item that comes before us. So discussing, so first, what our current jobs, housing balance is. Second, what our, what the ideal jobs, housing about balance is to ensure natural affordability. Staff is welcome to define that however they wish. And then, next, I'd want to hear the number of jobs expect or houses created through the proposal, and then the number of jobs and or houses we would need to create, both to get us back to our previous balance, and then also to our ultimate goal of, you know, shorting, assured, creating affordability through market rate housing. And I think it's like some relatively simple math, so I don't think it would be that complicated, or I hope it would not be complicated for staff to do. And the second project I'd love to talk about is, I think a lot of applicants come to us with, you know, okay, ideas for ground floor retail or ground floor something. And I think, you know, part of the reason the ideas are some, you know, often not that fleshed out, not that great, and I think we're often a little bit disappointed is because we don't give applicants a lot of guidance about what we're looking for. So I'd love some idea to survey neighborhoods, talking about what they're interested in, survey nonprofits in the community or arts organizations, just so we can have a list of, hey, here's our top five or ten things we'd love to see. Space created for in a development that happens in our community. So those are my two ideas. Thank you.
That's good. I, I will go ahead. Try, do you have a question or?
No, 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 I'm sorry.
I like those topics, and maybe for clarity, what I've been calling rather than retail, because it's kind of narrow in its scope, is what I like to call it, what I'm hearing in the trade and the industry is ground floor active space.
Which is exactly what I wrote down.
Okay, good. So, so maybe we'll refer this conversation and kind of direct it to making ground for active space. And it could be retail, it could be nonprofit, it could be, you know, I, and that's what I think we needed is we need to broaden our look at this. So I think this is great that we'll have this discussion, because it's something I'm very passionate about myself. So I like those very much. Thank you, Commissioner Simons.
So if I can summarize, I got jobs, housing balance or imbalance and ground floor active space as the topics, so we can list those on the agenda. Then these questions, we can put in a little memo or something that will go with the packet. I just want to clarify one thing. It's not the intent that staff is going to prepare a lot of material for the special meeting. This is really intended more as a brainstorming session by the commission, so I hope you don't expect to get a lot of this data at the special meeting.
Oh, not at all. Early, I was just thinking that, you know, in the long term, whether it's staff or the developer who's bringing the project proposal to us, I want to make sure that, you know, create, writing those numbers, so we have the, you know, have that jobs, housing balance numbers in front of us. I want to make sure that's not too numerous on staff.
Okay, okay, that's good. I would also say, along that line, if any of the commissioners have materials that you want to share with the rest of the commission on the topics that you want to talk about, you know, feel free to send those to me, and I will include those in the packet.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. It's like, Commissioner Simons, if you have examples or ideas you've seen of other places, if you could send those in, or if you have your own personal projections, anything that will help staff prepare us to have a, you know, a full conversation, I think would be helpful. I'm planning to, to do that for the subject I want to bring in. And just, if we present all that and have it in the packet and open to the public, then we could really freely, you know, dissect these topics and really get into them. And I think it would help us, you know, have a better idea of what we want to reach. Go ahead, Charlie.
Please go ahead and send, if you have material that you want to include, please go ahead and send it to me. Please don't copy the rest of the commission, just send it to me, and then I'll put it in the packet, and then you'll all get it as part of the agenda packet for the meeting.
Sounds great. Okay, and I'll just go next, because, you know, parking to me is near and dear. Particularly the overparking that we are seeing going on. And in specific, I'd like to talk about the, the current city guidelines and standards for, you know, reduced parking at fifty percent and transit rich areas. So I want to delve into that. And I'd really like to just get in entirely into the whole process and everything that the city has done in limiting its parking, reducing the parking, you know, minimums. I want to just really get in and understand that and the direction. And a second item on parking, what I do is talk about, see how the commission feels about the concept of a paid parking or parking tax on private law, private parking lots. So all the commercial developments, this is something I came up with, I think in two thousand and twelve, and I've pitched it to city council, and it's, it's a way that we can generate revenue that is under our control, and it's not taken by the state when the state needs or anything. So it's something that I'll provide information on stuff, but I'd really like to get in that and get the sense of what the commission thinks the viability of that. And currently, I agree, I like Henry's ideas. I was thinking of the jobs, housing balance. That's another issue, so I'm glad he brought that up. But those, those are the issues I would really like it. So what I'll do is I'll call on everyone else to see if they have anything, and we'll just kind of make this structured and kind of see if we get through this. So Commissioner Dram, did you have anything that you were thinking you'd like to discuss? No. Okay, Commissioner Gitzoni, I understood you might have had an ideas to.
Uh, yeah, Commissioner Simon's already pulled up several of what I'm interested in. There's a couple of things, one of which is wondering if we have strategies or ways that we can further utilization and, and availability of mass transit. I'm not sure what our powers are in regard to that. I think that dovetails in with the parking issue a little bit. I also, in terms of parking, I, while looking at this, I see that there are multiple ways of coming up with estimates of parking demand. There's the IT method, then there's the APA publishes a book by Donald Soup that questions the validity of that. And just kind of exploring what the different metrics are and how they come up, it seems to be really kind of a very disputed area as to how you come up with what the correct parking is. But I think that, you know, it's, it's a good topic to cover. In terms of housing, I think what we can do to to see encourage more ownership as opposed to rental, because I think that can be stabilizing for communities. And if that's something that we're able to somehow incentivize, and I don't know what powers we have to do that. And then, my final thing was, I feel like we're mostly evaluating things in kind of a reactive mode, reacting to what the market is saying. And there are other topics that aren't market-driven, such as disaster preparedness, dealing with climate change sort of issues. We're near a bay, there's things like flooding. Is that something that's really just the domain of city council, or is that something that we could be participating in? And if so, how?
I'm sorry, what can you, what is the title of that topic?
Title of that would be proactive possibilities for for the planning commission. Basically, I, I think all of our agenda items at this point are placed there by developers. And is it possible for us to look at and evaluate the city's disaster preparedness plan and other things like that? And I'm not sure, that might be exclusively the domain of city council or not, but I just am curious. And if we could discuss that, and I think that's something that staff might actually be able to give us input on.
Disaster preparedness, is that the?
Disaster preparedness, climate change, climate change preparation.
Okay.
And because that does deal with, you know, physical infrastructure in the city, and it seems to me like those determinations are things that we would never even see. And I'm wondering if that's something we should be playing a role in or not.
Okay, and then the, the previous one was incentivizing homeownership?
Um, yeah, because I feel like we have everything, it kind of ties, ties in a little bit with with Commissioner Simon's thing about, about evaluating residential and work balance. And I think also within residential, it might be advantageous to not have it be a pure rental market.
Okay, just want to make sure I got the title right.
And I'm thinking something we can add to that to, to tag on to it is the homeownership part. What can we do? And I'm thinking one thing we can explore is bonus points. Can we provide bonus points to the developer who gives us, you know, for sale housing as opposed to rental? So I think that's good.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. And one, one last thing that I was thinking about in terms of parking is I had noticed that we always exempt the floor space that is available for parking from floor area ratio calculations, and I'm wondering if that makes the most sense to do. I think that including parking space in the far calculations might actually be something that, that helps.
Would certainly make people not put it in if they ran out of floor space.
Yeah. And I think it, it takes up space.
Yeah, it does. And if you could, as part of providing some media background, if you could provide Charlie with those spec reports from Donald Shoup and from the other agencies you have, just kind of give us an overview on that, or the, basically, you know, supply the documents.
Yeah.
Or something.
I can, I can come up with some materials and send that to you. I'd send that to you within the next week. Would that work for you?
That would, that would be fine. Yes, thank you.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, Commissioner Chafe.
Thank you, Chair Keller. One point of clarification, are we putting all these things on the agenda? For sure, like as soon as we mention them, they go on the agenda, or do we want to take a moment to prioritize and think about the top X number after this?
We've, we've, I, staff has asked for you to pass a motion or motions on these things. So you've already done the first two, which is to cancel the June twenty-third meeting and to set the date for the special meeting. And then the third motion would be the topics to be included on that agenda. So I would say, after you've had this discussion, you can then consider a motion to, as to, you know, the list of topics you want on the agenda.
Okay, I think what we could do, Commissioner Chafe, is at the end when we're all done, we could just go through the list, because it's going to be concise or condensed, because Commissioner Gitzoni and Simon's expressed parking interest. So we think parking is going to be a different thing, so we can discuss what's on there. And then if we'd like, as we, you know, discuss this, we can decide now, do we want to prioritize one thing over another, start with this topic of that. So we can decide that, you know, after we get all the items on the list if we'd like.
Perfect. That sounds great. Okay, so to add to parking, I think another one is that we've often started to talk about future uses for parking garages. You know, sort of the ability to change use of space in the, in the future as transit demand changes, so we could add that in. And another thing that this relates a little bit to some of the topics that have already been mentioned, but I think a few times we've talked about how we're usually evaluating projects one by one and not holistically through a neighborhood. And I don't know if that's a non-starter of a conversation, but I just wanted to raise that as something that I've noticed come up in our discussions. And I was gonna say for Commissioner Gisone's recommendation on disaster and climate change, you might put in some headings like adaptation, mitigation, and resilience planning as categories. And perhaps one thing we could consider is whether we want to routinely mention and refer to the city's climate change documents in our discussions. Just something to put out there. I really like the homeownership one, and I may add to that one, building in below market rate opportunities that are related to homeownership. So right now, I think most of our BMR opportunities that come up are related to rental units, but it would be great to think specifically about BMR homeownership opportunities. And then the last one relates to parks and open space. I think there's two pieces here. One is that we've had a number of proposals usually related to life sciences, where some of the open space that's provided is only accessible to the tenants. And I think that's something that we've commented on a few times, so maybe having a discussion about what the best use of a popos is, or, you know, if we have any sort of feedback in general for those type of projects. And then the other one is just simply about increasing park space in the city. This is something that's come up in the Parks and Recreation Committees quite a bit. Is just, how do we get more park space? How do we fulfill some of the goals that are set out in the Parks and Recreation Plan for the city? And so, again, I don't know exactly what our powers would be on that, but I do think it might be a conversation worth having as we have different projects come in that have open space aspects to it. That's it.
Awesome. Okay, very good. And Vice Chairman Des.
Um, all the topics that were brought up were basically on my list, but kind of to build on parking and a comment about the F, FAR that Commissioner Gitzoni brought up. And maybe we, that's a form of us kind of having a maximum, because we got rid of the minimums, but I don't think we have like a maximum where, like a threshold. So having a way to kind of have a threshold for, for each project, I think, can be something that we can explore.
Charlie, don't we have a maximum? I mean, then the standard.
Well, yes.
How many are, is allowed by, you know, without?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure exactly what you're referring to, but we do have a parking maximum. The, there is an estimated demand. You know, maybe questionable how accurate it is, but there's an estimated demand specified in the zoning regulations, planning regulations for each use. And, but there's no minimum. So there used to be, it used to be one-third less than the estimated demand was the minimum. Then we got rid of the minimum, so now there's no minimum, but the maximum is ten percent more than the estimated demand.
Yeah.
Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, so I, I know that there's that, that ten percent. But, you know, that's kind of basically based on what the developer says is what their estimated demand is, right?
No, it's based on what the planning regulations say their estimated demand is.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah. So, so maybe Charlie, what we can do is clarify that at this meeting, so that we all get a better picture of that.
I was thinking that one, I think one helpful piece of information to include in the packet for this meeting would be the parking and loading regulations that are currently in the planning regulations, because some of the issues that I heard mentioned at your previous meeting, just in passing before you were really having a substantive discussion, but some of the things I heard are already in the planning regulations. So I think it would be helpful for the commission to have those regulations in front of you, so you know what, what we already have.
That sounds perfect.
Yep, that's a good idea. Thank you, Charlie. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you. And I just wanted to add one thing that I've been thinking about for years, and I was when Commissioner Chafe brought up the below market rate for purchasing housing. And, and this could be like a bottom of the list thing. It's just something I've often wanted to explore, the opportunity to create below market rate commercial spaces. There's a lot of businesses that get displaced out of Emeryville for development. And I'm thinking the one on San Pablo Avenue, there's that gym that's very, very popular. And they were talking about putting in, you know, biotech and a few condos and housing there, and that person would have lost his space. So it's always something I thought, you know, if someone loses space, could the developer build a place back into that building, and yet rent that at what he was paying before or some? So it's just a topic I'd like to talk about. If we have time, it could be the last time on the agenda, but something about creating some below market rate commercial space and, and a program for that. And I don't know how viable that is or whatnot, and we may not even get to, we have a lot to go on to, but that was something else. A chat, I, I saw you nodding a lot and looking. Is there anything you think that would be helpful for us to address or bring up as a subject or anything you'd like to add?
No, I'm just a, I'm just a casual observer.
You don't have very good poker face. You're shaking your head a lot and you look excited.
He's a, he's a habitual head knocker.
Well, that's good. I think that's a good thing. Okay, so I really think we've got a full agenda with those items. If there's nothing anyone else is really passionate about. Oh, yeah. Commissioner Dram?
This might be a small, I don't know if we can feed it or not. I just like to know more about the future of the skyline of the city. Is this something we can discuss in the meeting or not?
It's in the general plan. That's a general plan program, and it is, that's, I, I just looked it up recently. So what we could do is put that on the agenda, and if you want to look at the general plan, Commissioner Dram, between now and then, and decide if you, if you need to flush that out in our conversation, or if it has information you have, but, yeah, we could put that on the agenda again at the bottom, and then when we reach that point, if you feel like there's discussion you want to have, we could do that. Does that sound okay?
Yes, that's perfect.
Okay. Well, would you like me to summarize what I've heard?
I think we can start. The number one topic will be parking.
Yes, I got that, too. Let me pose a question to the city attorney. Christie, how specific do we, do you think we need to be on this agenda? If we just list parking and then the commission dives into any topic that's related to parking, is that sufficient?
Or should we? Need to be a little bit more specific than just parking. I think that I heard.
We need to be a little bit more specific than just parking. I think that I heard. You know, discussion of like the methods by which the city calculates parking demand and put, you know, options for reduced parking. You know, alternatives to the current regulations. Something along those lines, I think would be, just would narrow the focus a little bit and let the public know what's going to be discussed rather than just parking.
Okay.
And I think one of the things you want to mention is, is the one thing about proposing a citywide tax, because that would definitely get people's attention and we'll want to hear about that.
Right, tax on private parking lots, right?
Correct. Commercial, private, commercial, not residential.
Yeah. Okay.
So we don't have to formulate it now, but as long as we have the direction from the commission, I think we can, you know, make the legal, make the notice legally sufficient on our end. Sure.
Okay, so under parking. I have. Let's see. I have over parking and guidelines for the 50% reduction at the transit hubs. Methods of calculating parking demand, parking tax, citywide parking tax on private commercial parking lots. Future conversion of garages to other uses. And including parking in FAR. Did I miss anything?
Charlie, can I add one more thing? This would, this would maybe take a little bit of staff work. I apologize. But one thing I've been really curious about is how many parking spaces we have in the city and where they're distributed, like how many are in existing garages? I don't know if that's something that's fairly easily accessible or not. And I think the second piece of that is like, how many of their are privately owned? How many could be used by other developments? That's, that's basically what I'm getting at. It's like, how many exist in garages that could be used by other tenants or shared in some way?
I think we have that information. It may not be totally up to date, but I don't think it has changed much over the years. When we did the parking analysis for the parking meters that were put in the city recently, there was extensive analysis done by a consultant on existing parking resources in the city, including both on-street and off-street and private lots. So I think we can provide that to you. We can provide, you know, what we've already got from those studies.
That'd be great because I'll, I'll provide that also, but my counts were not actual physical counts. There are estimates and there's also a discussion, what I'll want to bring up on the taxing is unbundling parking, sharing parking and ideas for that as well. So that will be in there as well.
Okay, so did I miss anything on parking? Over parking and guidelines for 50%, well, those are probably two separate things. Over parking, wait, I guess, and guidelines for the reduction around transit hubs and alternatives, methods of parking, methods of calculating parking demand, citywide parking tax on private commercial parking lots, future conversion of garages to other uses and including parking in FAR. And then as background, we would provide the planning regulations section on parking and loading and the consultant studies that we have on existing parking supply. Is anything further on parking?
Yeah, one thing that I wanted to know or think about is can we incentivize or require unbundled parking on specific projects? So that there's no free parking?
I will just say that that's already in the regulations.
We, we can require that for a project that it be?
We do require it.
Okay.
So it is required. Okay. So you'll see that when in the regulations.
Okay, well then no need to discuss how, if we can't do that, if we already can.
Right, right.
All right, well, that was parking then.
Yeah.
So let's see, then the second topic was jobs housing balance. And I think from what I'm hearing, that might be our, our second topic, because that's also pretty important and pretty immediate. Does the commission think there's anything else that should come before that on our agenda? Yeah, let's make that item two.
Okay. So I heard, you know, what, basically what is it? Meaning, I guess, what is it now? And what is the natural balance for affordability? How many jobs and/or units would be created by each project? And what would be the number to get to our goal? I'm not sure exactly what that means. What number?
What would it take for us to reach the city's goal of creating the job, job housing balance that we'd like?
Well, that is an open question because I'm not sure we have a goal.
I guess, I guess the number that would be important to me is like, after we build X project, how many additional homes or jobs would we have to, would have to be created to get us back to right where we were before? So, you know, we built a biotech building with 400 jobs, then do we have to build 400 houses to make up for that, to get back to just the identical ratio we were before? Just sort of laying that out for the commission.
So Henry, you said before, what is the date you're going back to, to set that?
The day before the project opens.
Okay, so that would be a fluctuating date depending on when the project is actually open.
Basically making sure we're accounting for, or considering our jobs housing imbalance with each project that comes, at least have the information about our jobs housing imbalance and how each project relates to that.
Okay.
All right. Let me see. So the other topics that I heard. Let me just kind of go through this. We're not quite as nuanced, I don't think. We had mass transit availability and utilization. Incentivizing homeownership.
I think that one might follow the jobs housing balance and they kind of fit together nicely.
Okay. Let's see.
And for that top, we might just be asking to explore ways to encourage more for purchase housing and maybe looking at options for creating a bonus point category for providing for self housing.
Okay. And disaster preparedness. I'm not sure exactly what to say about that one. It there is. Well, it's not exactly in the general plan. What's in the general plan is you know, natural hazards and things like that that exist. But there is a separate hazard mitigation program and of course the climate action plan, which are separate from the general plan. I'm, I'm not sure exactly what you would want to discuss about those topics.
Mr. Chief, were those yours?
I think it was.
Yeah, I'm sure because Sonny brought that first. So why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, I, I guess what, I guess the largest general question around that is how can the planning commission address topics that we think are of interest or concern to the city that don't get brought through to us through the market process that seems to bring all the other agenda items in front of us. And is that something that, I mean, is the role of the planning commission just to entertain items that are brought before us by developers? Or do we have the purview to go out and say, oh, we see these other topics? Well. Seem to deal with city infrastructure.
I, I will comment that the vast majority of the items that do appear on planning commission agendas are development projects. But the commission also has purview over long-range planning. And that includes a lot of these policy kinds of issues. They don't come up that often, but there are things that do, we do either require planning commission input or recommendations to the council before the council adopts them. Or that staff simply refers to the commission because we think it's appropriate. So things like general plan, obviously, climate action plan. The capital improvement program. There's a state law that says the planning commission must review the capital improvement program to make sure it's consistent with the general plan before the city council adopts it. And there's a number of other issues that are related to longer range planning, citywide issues. They just don't come before the commission that often. I mean, as an example, we have on the agenda tonight, a discussion about mass timber, which is not about any specific development project. It's a policy question. Ultimately for consideration by the city council to go into the planning regulations.
Given, given what you just said, Charlie, what I'd like to do, if it's okay with everybody else, is to maybe amend that topic. And if you could just give us a short five, 10 minute overview of what we can do to bring other things that aren't market driven onto the agenda. Then that will give us the tools or the knowledge we need to think about what else we might want to bring onto the agenda, such as climate issues or, or disaster preparedness issues. And we could do that as, as we see fit. Does that make sense to people?
Yeah, I think, I mean, one thing I'd be interested in Commissioner Gisone is maybe having a, a short presentation about how the climate action plan fits in with our work. I've read through it in the context of a few projects that have come before us, just to look for overlap, but I agree with you. I mean, I think I understand where you're going, which is basically that, you know, some of the issues that are dealt with in these longer range planning documents are difficult to bring up on a project by project basis, right? And so whether it's that we need to consider them more consistently, even though they're not in the general plan, or yeah, I don't know. Maybe that's the part to think about a little bit more. And I don't know if it needs to fit into this meeting that we're planning now, or it could be a, an item on another.
Right. I think I understand where you're going. I, I'm not sure this is really a discreet discussion topic for this special meeting. I appreciate Commissioner Chase's comment about the climate action plan and as luck would have it, we have the environmental programs manager from Public Works right here at our meeting, kind of lurking in the background. And could potentially ask her to come to a future meeting and, you know, do a little primer on the climate action plan. And how it relates to the commission's work. So is that something that's doable, Nancy? As a future agenda topic? Yes, you're nodding your head. You're muted.
You're muted.
Yes, I can. I'd be glad to.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gisone, do you think that would be a good place to start?
Yes, I think that would be an excellent place to start. And that would address, I, I'm concerned about, I guess, about two things. One is that I feel like while we do stuff that's, that I really find valuable, it's mostly reactive. And I think that we have also the possibility of having a proactive role and I'd like to explore what that is. And the climate plan is, is one of the topics that looms largest in why I would want to do that. And so I think excellent place to start.
So Charlie, when you make the meeting for the summaries to do the presentation, could you add in part of that to explore further opportunities or how the commission would bring up topics that they would like to explore that are not driven by an active application? And then that way you can have the, the deeper conversation of doing, you know, what Commissioner Gisone is looking for.
Yeah, we can consider that for the, for future meeting.
So that makes sense to everybody? Okay.
Okay, so let's see. Oh, parks and open space. That was something that Commissioner Chafe brought up. Including popos.
And I'd just like to add to that funding sources for maintaining the parks that we have is we're kind of in a bit of a deplorable condition. The most are parks on the plural, but they're definitely declining. So I'm, I'd like to open more park space, but I'd first of all, like to see that we have a program maintaining what we have.
Oh, okay. And let's see. I, oh, BMR commercial space. He said to put that at the bottom.
If there's nothing else.
And skyline. Okay, so here's what I have. Parking, including over parking. Guidelines for 50% reduction around transit hubs, methods of parking demand, citywide parking tax on private commercial parking lots, future conversion of parks of garages to other uses, including parking in FAR. And we would provide the existing parking and loading regulations and the consultant studies that we have on existing parking supply. Second, jobs housing balance. What is it now? What is the balance, correct balance for affordability? What jobs or you and/or units are created by each project and how many more jobs or units would we need to produce after project is done to get back to the same balance we were before the project? Third, incentivizing homeownership, ways to encourage homeownership, bonus points, category possibly for homeownership. Fourth, parks and open space, including popos, funding sources, maintenance and increasing park space. Five, BMR, commercial space and six, the future of the skyline.
Anybody miss anything?
Does that sum it up?
I think it's good. I don't know that we'll get through all six, but I think that we've got a pretty good order and I think we're gonna feel at least good that we've had, had opportunity to talk about these things that we think are pretty important and don't get the opportunity to delve into.
So let me just check with the city attorney, make sure that you don't have any concerns about any of this.
No, that's fine. We can put those on the agenda with kind of a general topic followed by a colon and, you know, kind of the subtopics in, in each one. And I think that will work fine. I would reiterate just to the commission that, you know, staff that could provide, you know, pockets on each of these issues. So it may be a pretty high level discussion of each of these.
I guess that's what was for anyway.
And if you have information on these topics you would like me to include in the packet, please send them.
I would definitely encourage that. As staff is going to be pretty strapped to try to get this out. So anything that we can provide that we're interested in, please do so.
So we're doing this on Monday, the 16th. So if you have information to share with us to put in the packet, I think maybe by the end of next week, Friday, May 6th.
If I have said.
Would that work for everybody?
I think it needs to. Give you guys a break. So I need a motion on this. Setting the agenda for our meeting on May 16th, that's 6:30. Who will make the motion?
I can make the motion to set the agenda with the items that Charlie named.
Thank you, Commissioner Chief, a second.
I'll second that. Right, on the motion by Commissioner Chase and seconded by Commissioner Gisone. Commissioner Chafe.
Hi.
Commissioner Graham.
Hi.
Commissioner Gisone.
Hi.
Commissioner Simons.
I am.
Commissioner Zepco is absent. Vice Chair Mendez.
Hi.
And Chair Keller.
Hi.
Six eyes. You have set the agenda for your special meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Get that packet out probably a week or so before the meeting.
Very good. Okay, next item, we're gonna open it up for, well, maybe Charlie, now will probably be the good time to discuss the postponements.
Oh, yes, you should probably announce.
So we've had two requests to postpone two items on tonight's agenda and move them to the May meet, May, what is the date of the May meeting for?
May 26th.
My, May 26th. So item 8.1, the Emeryville Overland, every, every station over. Every every station over land and item 9.2, the marketplace redevelopment parcels, both applicants have requested. To postpone those items and move them to our May 26th meeting. So those items will not be discussed tonight and Director Bryant does inform me that provisions have been made, so both items can be. Included on that agenda for me 26, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're gonna have two things taken off tonight's agenda. And so at this point, unless there's any questions or anything that from the commission will go on to item four.
Would you like me to read the introductory comment about that or do you want to do that?
No, go ahead.
All right, now is the time for public comment, the public comment portion of the meeting. Anyone who wishes to make comments related to items not on the agenda or on the consent agenda, which we don't have. Should have submitted your online speaker card by now. Three minutes will be allowed for. Me to read your comments into the record. If you're participating in tonight's meeting via Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature visible on your screen. Or if you are calling in, press star nine. And I will now check to see. If I have any online speaker cards.
And while you're doing all this, this is for items not on tonight's agenda.
Correct, that is correct. So. Looking at the attendees, I do not see any raised hands and I do not have any online speaker cards.
Already, so we will close the public comment portion of the meeting and move on to item five, the approval of the action minutes. From our meeting of March 24th, 2022. Are there any corrections? Commissioner Chafe.
Do you have a correction for item seven and 9.2 on the meeting minutes? It stated that I needed to recuse myself because my. Home is within 500 feet of the project site and I believe it's between 500 and 1,000 feet.
Whoops, okay. Thank you for that catch. So that was seven and what was the other one?
I think it's 9.2.
Okay. And we stationed over, yes, that's right. Got it.
All right. Anything else? If not, can we have a motion to accept as corrected?
I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Thank you, a second.
I can second it.
Thank you.
Right on the motion by. Vice Chairman Mendez and seconded by Commissioner Chafe with the correction noted by Commissioner Chafe, Commissioner Chafe.
Hi.
Commissioner Graham.
Hi.
Commissioner Gitzoni.
Hi.
Commissioner Simons. Commissioner Zepco is absent, Vice Chair Mendez.
Hi.
And Chair Keller.
Hi.
Six eyes, the minutes are approved.
Thank you so very much. And now on to item six, the community development director's report.
Thank you, Chair Keller. With regard to recent city council actions, the council has had two meetings since your last meeting. The two council meetings were on April 5th and April 19th. On April 5th, the council held a study session on the so-called Adeline sites, which are three very small parcels. Owned by the city at the city of Emeryville at the corner of 36th and Adeline Streets. Two of those parcels are actually in Oakland and one is in Emeryville. The council directed that a request for proposals should be prepared for a single unit co-housing. To be developed by a nonprofit entity to provide housing opportunities for formerly incarcerated individuals. And if there are no acceptable responses to the RFP, then the property should be sold. The council adopted the second reading of the so-called right to recall ordinance, which amends the municipal code to add provisions. Which require covered employers to rehire employees. These are hotel and card room employees laid off due to COVID. In order of seniority, the ordinance will take effect on May 5th, which is 30 days after its final passage. And under action items, the council held a discussion, which was essentially a study session on the Emery Station Overland Project. The council expressed satisfaction with the manner in which the bonus points are proposed to be obtained for the project and they indicated that they felt that the findings. For parking over the maximum could be made. In addition, the council suggested adding more planters on the north wall of the garage building and more landscaping along the art walk. They also indicated that the proposed two-way cycle track on Overland Avenue. Should be extended to 65th Street. On August and April 19th. The council held a study session on the proposed. Plan unit development and development agreement amendments for the marketplace parcels ABNF project specifically, they received an update. On the negotiations that they had previously directed staff to undertake with the applicant concerning a monetary contribution to the affordable housing fund. In lieu of providing affordable units in the project, the council indicated that the proposed monetary contribution was insufficient. And they appointed an ad hoc committee consisting of the mayor and vice mayor to continue the negotiations with the applicant. The council passed a resolution amending the conditions of approval of the Bay Street project to simplify and clarify the provisions. Related to alcoholic beverage sales, et cetera. And the council adopted updated development impact fees for fiscal year 2022, 2023. These fees are related to transportation facilities, park and recreation facilities and affordable housing. And the updated fees will take effect on July 1st. And in other news, I just want to let you know that there is an upcoming community meeting on the 5801 Christie Mixed Use Project. And that is to be held on Wednesday, May 11th at 6:00 PM via Zoom. The flyer is not available yet, but it should be coming out soon. And when it does come out, it will be posted in the news flash section of the city's website, which is. At www.hemeryville.org. And it will also be mailed to surrounding property owners and tenants by the applicant. So again, 5801 Christie Community Meeting, Wednesday, May 11th at 6:00 PM. And that concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions.
Very good. Thank you so much. Anybody have any questions for Director Bryant?
Chair Keller, I have a very brief question. Quickly, I saw that there was some hostile architecture installed at the corner of 40th and Hollis. A bunch of boulders put on that corner where our eventual wonderful art center will go. Was that done by the city? When did that happen? If you had any information about that?
I think that probably would be appropriate for direct for commissioner comments at the end of the meeting. This is on the director's report right now.
Oh, sorry, okay, thanks.
Anything else? Okay, Commissioner Chafe.
I was just curious about the updates to the development impact fees. Is there anything that? Would be of interest to the commission? Is it based on just a monetary increase?
It's just a monetary increase. We do this every year. The development impact fees were adopted by the city council back in 2014. And they provide funding for park projects, transportation projects and affordable housing projects and the. Resolutions that adopted those fees back in 2014 have a provision that they are to be increased every year by a formula. So that's what they did.
Thank you.
Already see no other questions. We will go on to item seven, which is disclosure of expertise communications and identifications of public interest. And since we've lost two items on the agenda tonight, it would basically be on the study session for 5050 showmown. Which I will start with an expert communication. I did meet with the applicants on this project. I think it's been several, a couple of weeks ago now. And I also met with a resident Rod Hemmy on this project as well. Anybody else? We don't have too many recusals, right? Go ahead, Vice Chairman Mendez.
Yeah, so I also have an expertise communication with the applicant. Of item 9.1, I met with them on April 5th.
Very good, thank you. And Commissioner Simons.
I also had an expert communication with the developer for item 9.1 as well.
Very good. And Commissioner Gitzoni.
I had discussions about possibly having a discussion, but that didn't happen. I just can get past the planning.
Have any expertise communications? You just talked about having. Very good, Commissioner Chafe.
Yeah, same. I received a message about meeting, but wasn't actually able to meet.
Okay, so. Chrissy, just to clarify, we only need to mention these if we actually had a meeting, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so that being said, we're passing over item 8.1 and going on to item nine, the study session 9.1 for 50. To show them on the life science tower.
Did Commissioner Simons have another?
Do you have another question, Henry? Lower your hand.
Okay. All right, so this is.
Welcome, you've been sitting so quietly and patiently. Thank you.
Yeah, good evening, Commissioner Keller and Councilmember of Commission Commissioners. Can you see my screen? Okay. All right, so here we go. So this is the third study session of the 5850 Sherman Science Towers, just in terms to remind everyone of your look where the site is. It's between Christie Avenue and Shellmount Street, fronting on Shellmount Way. It's 1.5 acre parcel. There's an existing 61,000 square foot building which will be demolished in order to accommodate a life science tower. Which is about 270, a little over 275,000 square feet. So in terms of the three study sessions that the commission has seen, the first one was in August of last year. And at that time, the the project included the Life Science Building with some ground floor users. Non-residential ground floor users such as medical offices. The key issue for this project is regarding the mix of uses and getting clarity on that. This is in an M U R zone where if the site is between one and five acres. A mixed of use is required and one of the use needs to be residential. The provision, the the regulations do allow the commission to have just one use on the site. Provided that certain findings are being made. So at the August planning commission study session, the commission was generally. Okay with the proposal in terms of the uses, however, you did express a concern and about. The applicant's analysis of why housing was not feasible at the site. So that was the topic of the next study session. The applicant proposed, provided a housing analysis. And the city conducted a peer review. The city hired a consultant to do a peer review of the housing analysis. In order to see whether the housing on the site is not is feasible or not. So at the February, at the February study session, the majority of the commissioners indicated that they understood. The conclusions of the applicants and the city consultants analysis. That a large residential development was not financially feasible on this site at this time. But stated that at least some amount of housing should be considered as part of the proposal. And it was in response to this comment that the study session we are having today. Where the applicant has revised their proposal to include some townhomes and I'll go ahead and explain that. In terms of next steps, it is scheduled for a city council study session on May 17th. It is going to the city council because the project will require a general plan amendment and I will explain that in my presentation. So this is the new site plan. As you can, as I mentioned, they are proposing six townhouse units. Fronting the bicycle path that they were proposing. And this would be on the other side of this path is the city-owned parcel where future affordable housing will be built. Each of these townhouse units are about 1,300 square feet. And and all six of them will be a BMR units of which, let's say, four will be. Very low income units and the remaining two will be low income units. The other changes on the ground floor is that initially, there was about 10,000 square feet of medical and clinic office space. So that has been eliminated. There is a smaller immunity, roughly about the same immunity size as the previous proposal. And of course, you have the lobby and the back and the and the loading on the ground floor as well. The entry to the site remains of Christie. So this kind of is the section, the north-south building section. So you can, it kind of tells you that these are two different buildings. The two-story residential units will be a separate building made of wood construction. And then you have the life science tower sort of cantilevered on these on these residential units. So this kind of gives you an idea of how the proposal would look. This is the elevation on the north along the bike pedestrian path and that's where the townhouses would be fronting. This is the south elevation or the Shellmount Way elevation. And this is the Christie Avenue elevation. And this is the east elevation which fronts a parking lot at this time. I will let the applicant go a little bit further detail into the design of the proposal, but at this stage it is really preliminary. And the whole idea right now is to kind of stabilize the mix of users on the site. So in terms of conformity to the general plan, I had indicated that a general plan amendment would be needed for this proposal. And the reason for this is that this is an excerpt from our general plan and the Shellmount Way that is being shown. On the general, general plan is 250 feet north of the existing configuration. So the and the reason why we have this relocation is that in 2007. Prior to the current general plan adoption, a traffic analysis was conducted for this region. Which recommended that the Shellmount Way be relocated. To 250 feet north of the current location in order to improve circulation in the area and also to create a larger open parcel. South of Shellmount Way. And so when general plan was adopted in 2009, it included this relocation of Shellmount Way. Some of you on the commission may recall that during the 2017, 2018 period. The commission held three study sessions on the site for a residential proposal. And 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 it was recommended that the general plan be amended to modify the location of Shellmount Way. So that it is consistent with its existing configuration. So the Shellmount Way will remain where it is. In March of 2018, BPAC recommended that the proposed general plan amendment include an east-west pedestrian bicycle path. In the approximate location where the plan shows the relocated Shellmount Way. The council concurred with BPAC and gave direction that this general plan amendment being include the addition of this. Bike and pedestrian and bike path along the northern portion of the property. With the idea that the 10 feet would be provided by the site and 10 feet would come from the city-owned adjacent property. The staff advised the current applicant to include this GPA and provide the 10 feet to accommodate this new path and they have done so. So in terms of zoning district, like I had mentioned, this is an M U R base zone and it also has a transit hub overlay zone. R and D that is we propose is allowed with the conditional use permit and residential is allowed by right. In the mix of users, as I mentioned, the puzzle size is 1.5. And so a mix is required where one use must be residential. So this they have done, the regulations do not specify the proportion of the mix between the residential and non-residential users. And it is up to the discretion of the commission to determine whether this proposal qualifies as mixed use. And that is, that is the question, essentially the key question that is in front of you today for the study session. In terms of FAR, it's in the 3.0 base with the bonus going to six. They are proposing the full bonus. FAR of six, so they will need 100 bonus points. Height, it's in the 85 base with unlimited bonus height. The project height is 240 and so the project will require 100 points for the height. Terms of residential density, it lies in 85 units per acre with bonus density going up to 170 units per acre. And obviously, the proposal meets the base density and calculates to four units per acre. So for non-residential projects, the applicant will need to obtain half the bonus points by paying an additional affordable housing impact fee. So in today's dollars, that calculates to about 3.75 million if the building permit was issued today. Obviously, this would be a little higher when, at the time when, in the future, when the building permit is issued. The remaining 50 bonus points must be earned through the provision of community benefits. At this time, the applicant has not precisely identified how they will obtain those bonus points, but has suggested providing. Additional public open space and public improvements. but has suggested providing additional public open space and public improvements as a way of getting the remaining fifty bonus points. In terms of parking, I mentioned that this is in the transit hub overlay, which further reduces all required parking by fifty percent. So the staff report does the calculation. So in terms of requirement, the is zero to four hundred and sixteen spaces. What they are proposing is four hundred and nine spaces, so the project complies with the parking regulations. In terms of bicycle parking, it calculates to seventy-six short-term and seventy-six long-term spaces. They are, they are showing bicycle parking room on the ground floor. But the number is not indicated at this time, and the short-term bike parking will need to be figured out at a later time in terms of its location and number. In terms of open space, non-residential, what they need to provide is a little over nineteen thousand square feet, of which little under four thousand needs to be in form of purpose. They are providing fifteen thousand square feet of empty space on the fifth floor. And that would be for the non-residential users. They are also providing a little over nineteen thousand open space on the ground floor. A portion of this is in the public right of way. In terms of the residential open space, it's not shown at this time and will be figured out in the future. Sidewalk design guidelines, Shellmount Way is pedestrian priority zone, which calls for twelve-foot wide sidewalk. Christie Avenue is designated as a green street, which calls for a fifteen-foot sidewalk. The project complies with these requirements. In terms of staff comments, the building division and the fire department indicated that did not foresee a code issue for the concept of two separate buildings built with different materials. The committee unanimously agreed that the inclusion of the BMR townhomes was a good addition to the proposal and had a potential to create a unique alley that would be aligned with residential project along the north edge of the pedestrian bicycle path. A suggestion was made that with the right treatment such as a shaded canopy, the alley had the potential of creating a unique open space. In addition, increasing the height of the cantilever was also suggested as a way of creating some relief at the pedestrian scale and providing an opportunity for rooftop open space for townhome units. And there was also a discussion on the adequacy of the passenger drop-off and loading proposed of Christie Avenue. The use of bonus points to fund potential public improvements in the Shellmount Christie Power Loop area was also discussed. So in terms of the issues to be considered, like I had mentioned, it is the mix of users. The project is primarily an R and D building with six BMR townhomes. So the question is, does the commission feel that this unit, this mix of uses is appropriate for the site? Does the commission have any suggestions at this time for the type of community benefits they would like the project to provide? And of course, any other comments on the preliminary design concept would be welcome. In terms of next steps, like I had mentioned, there is a city council study session on May seventeenth. There will be a review by BPAC, and then there will also be secure review done once the site plan and the mix of users has been stabilized. So that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and of course, the applicant does have a presentation. One more thing I would like to mention that there were two emails that were received, that were sent to the commission. And these were from Rod Henry and Leslie Strauss. These were forwarded to the applicant, so the applicant has copies of those comments. So if there are any questions of me or anybody else on staff, then I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. I thought it unmuted. I didn't ask if the commission had any questions. But we don't see any. Okay, so she'll move on to the applicant presentation.
I believe I have elevated everybody on the applicants team, although.
Looks to be three.
Right. Yes, that is all of them.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry, trying to to figure out Zoom here. I hope everyone can hear me, okay?
Yes.
Yep.
Perfect. Also, just minimize my Zoom so no longer have control of my mute and video. Just a second, sorry. All right, we'll hopefully try and make do with with this for now. Anyways, good evening, everyone. Glad to glad to be back in front of you this evening. Miro, thank you very much for your staff reports and the continued work on this project, obviously with with ourselves and also with the planning commission. My name is Mike Lee. I'm a senior vice president of investments at C A Ventures. And I'm joined this evening by Russell Brenner, our president of C A Health and Science Trust, as well as our lead architect from S E B, Mike Keel. Just want to say on behalf of myself, Russ, Mike, and the rest of the project team, we're excited to be able to re-present our updated proposal to you this evening. As Maru alluded to in the majority of her presentation, we've been actively working on this site really since about twenty eighteen. And this is our third time coming in front of the planning commission with our proposed life science-led developments, having met with you before in August of last year, as well as more recently in February. In February, we presented our analysis on the housing market, which was reviewed by the city hired third-party consultants and concluded that the or that a residential-led development was not feasible on the site primarily due to specific site conditions, due to its asymmetry, as well as the continuing disparity between rents and rising construction costs. And while that analysis was received and accepted by the commission, the commission was not convinced that a lesser number of units within the base of the building was also not feasible. So at the commission's request in the time since February, we have gone back and explored if it is possible to incorporate a handful of two-story townhouse residential units within the base of the building as per the direction. And following detailed conversations with the, sorry, excuse me, following detailed conversations and consideration for the different potential locations that these units could be placed around the base of the building, we've ultimately concluded that the northern side of the building along the bike path is the best location for the six affordable two-story townhouses that we were able to fit within the project. So this evening, we'd like to walk the planning commission through the consideration that was given to each of the different possible locations for these residential units within the base of the building and help the commission understand why we've ultimately concluded that the most feasible location for these units is along the bike path on the north. So to start the analysis, the the sites, as everyone is aware, or we hope you're aware, is fronting both Christie Avenue as well as Shellmount Way and has non-street property lines along the north, which is a city-owned site, and to the east, which is the marketplace parcel F. So looking first at the marketplace parcel F, this as a pro for this location would be one of the better access points to the public market. It's in close proximity of the public market, and it's obviously could be landscaped to create an easy access and walk from the bike lane to the marketplace. However, one of the key considerations that ultimately led us to believe this was not an ideal location for these townhouse units was primarily the fact that we do not control what is happening on that parcel. And therefore, any developments on that, any developments of residential units along that property line could be negatively impacted by future developments on the parcel F, which we ultimately do not control. Additionally, there are key building infrastructure elements, not just the bike parking, but also utility rooms that are located along that side of the building, which do not have an active use. And so by placing the residential units along this eastern property line, those utilities and other key building infrastructures would have to be relocated to another part of the building. I do most likely along the bike bike path, which would ultimately not activate the bike path, which is something we certainly want to be activated and used on a regular basis. The second location that we considered, and I think this was also one of the locations that was considered by commissioners at the previous planning commission, was locating these residential units along Shellmount Way. Shellmount Way would present the best natural light for these units. However, given the busyness of that intersection, it just generally does not present as a very residential-friendly option, given the fact that you have traffic circulation and the potential for in the evenings when there's no natural light for light from traffic patterns to spill into some of these units. Similar to the considerations along the eastern edge of the property line, there are key building infrastructure elements that are located along the southern edge of the building, which would ultimately need to be relocated to, again, the north of the building along the bike lane. Also, in a similar situation, not allowing us to activate the bike lane in a in a manner that we'd hoped to. Christie, the placing the residential units along Christie Avenue could have been the best sort of alternative location to placing them along the bike lane. Reason for this being that there's already, in our view, a residential corridor formed by Christie with the condominiums and rental apartments further north. The eventual development of the city housing, or excuse me, the city-owned sites just north of our property line and slightly north of that as well. And then the eventual or proposed development at this time of the site across the street from us on Christie into the proposed combination of of housing as well as life science. However, the placements along Christie would require the relocation of the lobby as proposed to Shellmount, and that that relocation of the lobby to Shellmount does not provide any opportunity for access points for drop, pickup and drop-off because the curb cut we've been advised would be not well-placed on a busy street like Shellmount. Additionally, placing the townhouses along Christie would also require the relocation of the ingress and egress for the parking structure and loading docks to Shellmount. And again, we've been advised by city staff as well as the fire marshal that play, that we should not place the parking entrances off of Shellmount if we if we can avoid it. So that brings us to ultimately the 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 best location within the base of the building that we were able to settle on, which is along the northern property line, adjacent or along the bike path. These units would help to activate the bike lane and create a community with the a community and a continuity with the eventual development of the city on site just north of fifty-eight fifty. Furthermore, from a residence perspective, the residents would be able to walk out onto a presentable and landscaped public space rather than a busy street intersection. And ultimately, or I should say ultimately, one of the negatives or the one downside to placing the the units along this part of the site is it's unfortunately the narrowest part of our site. And therefore, that limits the overall number of units that we would be able to to fit. However, we believe that the proximity to the future affordable housing, the access to the bike lane, and the ability to maintain key infrastructure and back-of-house spaces and logical places within the life science part of the building made this the the most feasible and the most logical location for these residential units. With that, I'd like to hand it over to Mike at S E B to speak a little further on the specific design considerations that were given to the placement of these units and elaborate a little bit more on the design perspective for that placement.
Well, thanks, Mike, and good evening, everyone. So these diagrams were included in the presentation package you were received. And these are just some of the sort of organizational diagrams that we use to study and ultimately develop our our proposed design. And as you can see, they they highlight the, as Mike pointed out, the asymmetrical sort of odd and irregular shape of the site. Christie Avenue and Shellmounts come together at the corner. And then we have the the non-right-of-way property lines to the north and to the east. And so our our concept for this site in several iterations has been, how do we develop fantastic circulation around the site? How do we maximize open space opportunities on the site? And then lately, how do we incorporate the best quality affordable residential units that we can? And so you can see that with the affordable units on the north side, creating a precinct around the bike path, which is also going to be a pedestrian muse and landscape open space on the north side is going to create a future little precinct there that's going to feel really nice. We're going to have great open space on the street corner and around the edges of the site. And we're going to support the bicycle connection that comes from the train station across the north half of the site, as well as potential future connections that come from the other bike path streets in the in the neighborhood. If you want to go to the next slide, Mike?
Certainly.
So this is our site plan in more detail. As Mike mentioned, just to our east is that existing parking lot called Parcel F. Also, Parcel F, it's important to note, wraps around about a third of the southern end of our site. And so that is owned by Parcel F, which means that there's there's no access from Shellmount Way to our site for that width. And because of that, the 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 distance from the end of that sliver, as we're calling it, the end of that sliver to Shellmount Way is too close for safe curb cuts, for drop-offs, for parking access, even for fire lanes or utility truck access. It 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 really hampers the usability of the southern part of that site for any vehicular uses. So to have a large office space, office and labs building requires some sort of a drop-off, vehicular drop-off. And so logically, that needs to be located on Christie Avenue. But the bicycle path along the north side will be a fantastic connection and a great asset or or amenity for the townhouses. And so what we've shown here are these six formal townhouses. They're they're going to have great aspects. They're going to be two bedrooms. So they are great for, you know, beginning families, you know, people who want to come to the area and and start to put down roots, and they they just need a place to start. But by having them there and still allowing our parking access off of Christie, we'll be able to get a functional office and labs building. We'll be able to get all the trucks to maneuver, you know, on the site, not on the streets. We're going to minimize the impact to traffic as much as possible and and get all of the infrastructure that the rest of the building needs while providing a a separation so that those units can be completely separated and and not impacted by the logistics and infrastructure that have to go in behind them for the lab building. And then, as Maru pointed out, these are very preliminary design drawings. So we're just trying to show what's possible. We're not trying to propose any actual detailed design at this point, but you can see how these six townhouse units can have walk-up stoop entries, lots of landscaping, a great residential character as they line the bike lane. And the lab building will sort of fade into the background, sort of above and behind them. And then on the next slide, you can see, I believe, the section. And so as Maru pointed out, we're keeping these buildings structurally separate. There's a bunch of reasons for that. There's fire code, etc., but there's also acoustics and a bunch of other reasons why they would want to be physically separate. And they're sort of nested in next to this building. But that will provide for sort of a great residential quality and a and a feeling of individuality as you as you walk right up off of the bike lane into your private entry door for your private unit. And then these are potential options for the, the character that these townhouses might take. You'll notice that they're all very, very different and that's absolutely on purpose because we have not yet begun to design these in detail. We're just trying to show you what some potential character characteristics and, and feeling of that muse space might be. Finally, th- these are just some of the statistics about the site. Most of the zoning here already, we have our breakdown of our parking demands, which is based on the planning code. And so we've calculated the number of parking spaces here and the bicycle parking requirements. My number doesn't, doesn't match Maru's. I'm sure Maru's is right. And of course, we'll make sure that the bike parking meets the requirements. If, if, you know, once we get to the more detailed design stage of, of this process.
Thanks, Mike. Before we go ahead and conclude, I want to jump back for a second to just discuss the overall, overall massing of the building, even though the, the primary discussion and, and conversation we'd like to have is around the mixed uses. We still want to take a second to acknowledge some of the additional design considerations and public commentary that we received during the previous meeting, especially as it relates to the building massing and more specifically, the frontage on, on Christie. As discussed at that last study session, you know, our proposed massing does meet the city design guidelines, including exceeding the required sidewalk widths and providing active uses facing the street and maximizing the amount of usable community open space at that street level. But given the small size and the regular shape of our site, you know, many of the alternative massing options that we explored presented issues for active uses, you know, the location of the lobby and associated pickup and drop off areas and, and required fire protection separation and distances from those property lines. So as we, you know, receive clarity on our proposed mix of uses and, and progress to more detailed design stages, well, we are certainly happy to revisit alternative orientations of the, the tower and parking structure. But there's definitely been some consideration at this stage given to the orientation and, and design as it, or orientation on the site at the moment. But I, I felt it was appropriate to, to at least acknowledge the fact that we've, we've heard some of these comments. And as we get to the next stage of our design process, when we go into the more detailed design elements, these will definitely be taken into reconsideration again. So i- in conclusion, we'd like to keep this a little short so we don't go well over close to midnight again. So we'd like to request responses and comments from the commissioners on the proposed mix of uses in order to enable the project team to progress with the next stages of the design. The, you know, a primary residential project, we've, I think, all agreed is not feasible on the site. And, and we believe that we have convincingly demonstrated that at the previous February meeting. We obviously want to continue working with the planning commission and all the other stakeholders in the city of Emeryville to redevelop and improve what is severely underutilized site in the downtown core of Emeryville. And so with that goal in mind, we hope that the proposed mix of uses and the inclusion of townhouse units as requested by the planning commission in February can ultimately be viewed as an acceptable mix of uses and confirmed this evening in order to allow us to, to move forward to more detailed levels of, of design review. So once again, Maru, thank you for your report to all the planning commissioners. Thank you again for your time and for taking time to meet with us previously and in person. And we look forward to hearing your feedback and welcome any questions you may have.
Very good. Thank you, Mike and Mike. That was a good presentation and a nice explanation of your methodology. Right now, we would entertain questions for the applicant. Are there any questions directly for the applicant at this time for the commission? Commissioner Chief.
Thank you, Chair Keller, and thank you so much for the presentation. I had one question about the proposed townhome units. And I see here that it's written that they would be for low or very low income renters. And I was wondering why it's designed for renters and not for sale. Could you speak to that a little bit?
Certainly. I think the rationale for the design for renters initially was to maintain a continuity of, of ownership on the site just because of the complex use of the lab space going on above it. We figured that it would be simplest or cleanest to make sure that the ultimate control of those residential units from a leasing standpoint and a maintenance standpoint, more specifically, was kept within the same ownership. From conversations we've had with the commissioners as well as some other stakeholders within Emeryville, we understand that there's a potential desire for these to be looked at from a, a for sale standpoint. And I think that's definitely something we'd be willing to consider. But at this stage, it's probably a little bit too soon for us to comment fully on whether or not that's actually possible.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions for the commissioner?
Yes, I just, um, could you tell us a little bit about what the lighting situation would be for those units? Since that is some, something of a narrow space, I'm just curious if you did any light studies and can tell us what that would be.
We have not, sorry, Mike, do you want to say this?
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner. We haven't done any, any detailed studies like that. This, this is very preliminary. These are north-facing units. However, it's, it's a twenty-five foot wide space to the next property line. And so that, that is certainly as, as wide as many narrow streets in, in the Bay Area. And so we feel like there will be sufficient natural lighting, of course. And the, all of the occupied rooms, the bedrooms, living rooms and so forth are anticipated to be on that, on that north side and get that light. Thank you.
You. Anyone else with questions? All righty, we will move on then to public comments. Now is the time for the public to address the commission on this item. Comments will be limited to three minutes generally, and I will check with director to see if there are any online speaker cards or any emails or anyone in the chat room.
Yes, Chair Keller, thank you. I don't see at the moment any raised hands among the attendees. However, we have received five online speaker cards. And I believe there were also some emails, at least one, that was previously received, which Miru indicated the commission has received. So I won't be reading those emails, but I will read the online speaker cards. I've noticed that none of the people who submitted online speaker cards appear to be in the attendee list. So therefore, I will just go ahead and read their cards. I would note that Rod Henme, who was the first online speaker card that I received, he also requested me separately to show a drawing or some drawings that he had prepared when I read his comments. So I will do that now with your indulgence. You start my timer, so I'll go over here. Let's see, here we go. Can you see that drawing?
Yes, we can. And Charlie, quite honestly, because of the work that's put into this and the detail, if I'm, you know, read through the email correctly, if you go over the three minutes on this, I don't have a problem with that. There's, I think, Mr. Henry's gone into a lot of detail and I would like the commission to see most of that.
All right, hello.
I'm sure you'll be as concise with your terms as you can.
Talk as fast as I can. I'm just reading, I'm just reading Mr. Henry's online speaker right now. Good evening to the planning commission. I am Rod Henme, Christie Avenue resident and design director for HKIT Architects, a leading affordability, affordable housing firm. I am writing to recommend a change to the proposed scheme that I believe will result in a better urban design, more pedestrian-friendly Christie Avenue and overall more successful project. I have emailed drawings of the scheme to all of you and to planning staff. So hopefully you have seen this alternative and are familiar with its visual impacts. I have also included a copy of the drawings with this testimony. Perhaps the three sheets can be shown online. Essentially, I am proposing that the low parking mass of seventy-six feet be oriented toward Christie Avenue rather than to the back of the site. This mitigates the impact of the two hundred and sixty-five foot tower by stepping down the massing towards Christie, which is a key residential pedestrian supportive street. And I'll just scroll down to the second page here. The drawings showing this alternative are based on keeping the tower and the parking mass approximately the same area. So the schemes are comparable. A west-facing roof deck will require a full height glass windscreen, but gains the advantage of midday and afternoon sunlight and tremendous views of the bay. It will also provide visual relief to the street. Walking towards the project will be very interesting for Christie Avenue pedestrians to see people and activity on a roof deck overlooking the street. This feature will enhance the pedestrian experience rather than having the sheer unmitigated two hundred and sixty-five foot mass right up to the edge of the street. And I'll scroll down to the third page now. I am, I recognize this alternative will be more difficult to resolve than the current scheme, but I am familiar with the work of SCB, the architects, and I am confident that they have the skills to work out this alternative. Should they have difficulty, I would be happy to assist. Finally, I encourage the commission to recommend a lower height to the building to bring it more into scale with the surrounding neighborhood. Admittedly, a tall tower is required for financial feasibility, but a slight reduction is usually possible and even suggested, even expected by developers. I suggest a reduction in height of fifty feet. Thank you for considering these suggestions. And finished, finished with time to spare.
Good job.
Okay, so let me stop this share now. And I'll bring up the next online speaker card. Sorry, bear with me here for a second. This is from Nicholas Ribado. Please consider updating the proposed project with larger massing in the back of the project, protecting the pedestrian experience on Christie Avenue. All current buildings on Christie Avenue are very low in elevation with the exception of a small handful that are further set back from the street to avoid negative impact on pedestrian experience. This project is at risk of impacting livability of this area as a result. Secondly, a large concern of mine and many neighbors is the impact to traffic in the area. The constraint is, oh, this constraint, no, this, the constraint is already present given single-lane road near a major highway entrance with heavy traffic. The proposed project will increase overall traffic and cars significantly. The entrances and exits to, for traffic flow need to be carefully designed to minimize this impact on Christie. The side of Shellmount towards the train tracks should be considered to support traffic flow. Overall, the height remains a concern in general. Having said that, my first point above would positively support this impact. The next card is from Lisa Findley. She says, I comment as an Emeryville homeowner, homeowner as resident within two hundred feet of the site and as a professor of architecture. Little has changed in this proposal except for addition of six affordable townhouses facing north and completely utterly overshadowed by the building mass rising over it. This is an impoverished response to the commission's earlier request that the developer seriously study how to include housing in the proposal. And it does very little to address the city's commitment to work, living balance in development. This reflects the overall attitude of the developers who continue to use weak strategies for dramatically exceeding zoning hundred-foot height limit. Along with the ill-conceived housing proposal, as we have all noticed noted before, a significant proportion of the post they propose is already in the public domain and located at an intersection with heavy traffic, making it at most an aesthetic plaza for the entry as opposed to an actual usable public space for the residents of Emeryville. In this new iteration, no change has been made to the height of the proposed building. It still looms over the sidewalk of the proposed Green Street of Christie Avenue, making for the unpleasant and for Emeryville unprecedented hyper-urban edge. Given the way that Christie curves at the site, the building would be a huge mass on access with the residential. Sorry, I lost my place. End of the street from fifty-ninth to sixty-fifth streets. This exceedingly tall tower to the south-southeast of the street would impinge on Christie Avenue's identity, identity as a green street and several other ways. It will generate significant traffic and congest congestion along the street. It will cast shadows over the street and the Christie Avenue Park, especially during winter months, and it is quite simply out of scale with the street. Absolutely no mitigation or design proposals have been made to respond to the concerns about traffic and congestion. At the very least, perhaps the commission can work with a developer to widen Christie Avenue between Shellmount Way and Fifty-Ninth Street so that it is a full two lanes rather than narrowing it to one lane immediately before the driveway proposed by this project. Negation measures that protect pedestrians at this busy, single-entry exit driveway. Loading dock driveway should also be insisted upon. In closing, as I commented before, there is a lot of biotech development buzz in Emeryville and a lot of projects already approved and underway. Just a couple of years ago, pre-pandemic, the buzz and financial backing were about housing. I urge the commission to be cautious about the financial arguments for this type of building at this unprecedented time. And next speaker is Judy Krasnick. Also on Christie Avenue, sixty-twenty-three Christie Avenue. Hello, Planning Committee. Thank you for taking my comment. The resubmitted proposal for fifty-eight fifty Showmount Avenue still leaves me with serious concerns about the overall impact on our community and neighborhoods. The alternative drawing, which poses to set the mass of the building farther back from Christie Avenue, is appealing, especially if done in combination with a reduction of the height of the tower. Both will help to retain some light views and more of the community feel that all pedestrians appreciate in our very mixed-use town. I also hope that there are studies and plans underway to address the increase in traffic that will impact access points all around Powell, Christie, Shellmount and the freeway ramps. And particularly at high-volume times of the day. Thank you very much for your time, Judy Krasnick. And finally, the last commenter is Moira. I'm not sure how to pronounce this, Noizu, Noizu. It looks like noise with a UX on the end. Hello, I live in the immediate area. I am very concerned about the curve in the road where the traffic emerges from two lanes into one along with a blind intersection, having a huge building with hundreds of cars. And a new egress without proper planning will be a disaster. Please set the building back from the street to allow some easement as well. I'm very much in support of new development and infill and housing. I simply ask that it be created in an accessible way that does not overall dominate the neighborhood and the limited pedestrian accessibility that we are trying desperately to hang on to. Thank you. And I will do a quick check to see if I have received any additional online speaker cards in the last few minutes. Do not see any. And a quick check of the attendees. I do not see any further raised hands or any raised hands among the attendees. Believe that concludes the public comment.
Very good. And we will close the public comment section of the meeting and bring it back to the commission. And just in order of expedience and everything, I will just call on commissioners and get their input for the applicants. So Commissioner Simons.
Thanks, Chair Keller. I think I'm generally pleased with this. I was a little initially skeptical of asking the applicant to propose to make townhouses happen. I'm not really pleased. I think it's really nice that they're set off the street in quite a busy neighborhood. I don't have a lot of concerns about the building being too close to the street or too tall. I'm also a big fan of shade, as I think are many of us on these increasingly hot days. So project seems good to me. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Gitzoni.
Yeah, I, I have a number of comments. The, I think that one of the things going on is, I guess, I'm going to look at the staff questions that we had about this is does this fit a mix of uses appropriate for the site? And that's where I'm kind of wondering. I think that there's, there's no guideline in the regulations. So the, the planning commission kind of needs to decide. So the three things that I make this fit is we, I need to ensure that there's adequate housing stock. This provides some, but not really very much. And it is a mixed use and so that residential requirement is, is serious. On the fact that it's BMR units, I do think counts in favor of it. We want to be trying to provide a healthy balance between work- We want to be trying to provide a healthy balance between workspaces and residential spaces and adding six more units, but a lot of workspace still concerns me. And the, the last and probably most important thing is that we want to be creating cohesive communities. And I think the last study session, I also mentioned that we have a very nice walkable neighborhood to the north. And the way things are zoned, we have the potential to have more development of that to the south. And we need to have whatever is built in the middle, not be an interruption of that. I think we want to have a continuous pedestrian experiences, open and friendly and inviting to the people that live there among the mixed uses. And I'm very concerned about having a huge mass right along Christie. The Ron Hadme's suggestion of reversing it and having slow, smaller mass on Christie would make a big difference in how I see this project. But as it is, if we make it so that there's a north of the project and south of a project neighborhood as opposed to one cohesive one, I think we've really lost something. And let me see if I have anything else in my notes there. Yeah, the other thing is, in addition to providing housing on the site, I think that if you provide something like park service parks and other things that are a draw for the community to come to and attend, even if it's not housing, the fact that you created a community center that brings the neighborhood together also helps further some of the goals we're looking for. But I am concerned about the low amount of housing and I am concerned about the large amount of massing on Christie. That doesn't feel like a pedestrian experience. And so for the people that live near there, I don't think that's going to feel like a neighborhood. But you know, I do like the idea of the homes being on the bike path. That looks really nice. We've got a bike path on Doyle Street here where you have homes opening up under that. And that is a very positive environment for the people that are there. So that's nice. But that's my comments. Thank you very much for your presentation too. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. And Commissioner Drum.
Thank you for presentation. I think the project is getting there. A very good direction. Thank you for adding those units. The only comments I have is if we can have more units or add another floor for the new units and make these separate units maybe a little bit wider and singular on each level. The location of the townhouses is a nice location, I think. And it's getting there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chief.
Thank you, Chair Keller, and thanks for the presentation. I'd also like to say thank you to all of the public commenters that wrote in. Very helpful to hear your, your perspectives as well. And so I think in terms of mix of uses, just going through the, the questions here, it would be a little bit easier for me to make that finding if there were slightly more units as Commissioner Ram just mentioned. I actually have a question for the applicant, which we can throw out after everyone has finished making their commissioner comments, which is why six units were chosen and not more. Given that it's kind of, you know, carving out a part of the building already, why not go higher in that? I think the other way to adjust the ratio a bit would be to lower the tower a bit and, and change that ratio. In terms of the bonus points question, I'm not sure yet. I don't really have an opinion about that, but I think there are a few interesting new ideas that are coming out in this project that would potentially lend themselves to bonus points. In terms of design, I really like the staff idea about rooftop open space on the residential units. I think that's creative. I definitely have concerns about the open space on the corner of Shellmount and Christie. I think it's going to take a lot of creativity and hard work to make that a meaningful and useful and pleasant space for people to use. I think it's possible, but it's definitely going to take some mitigation of the traffic to backside there. I really like this idea about creating an alley and sort of maximizing the benefits of the bike and pad path and the fact that there could be some residential on both sides of it, the aspect of having an really feel like an alley, there could be some creative uses along the sides of the path. If there's enough space there, I'm just adding in a few amenities for people to want to stop and, and spend some time there. I think I had one other point, but I have now forgotten. So.
Back to you. Don't worry.
I will, I will leave it there. Thanks.
Okay, we'll call back on you before we go to close it up. And vice chairman is.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the applicants as well for the presentation. I appreciate that you've taken all of our comments and also the public's comments and really thoughtfully try to incorporate them. I, as far as the mix of use, does this satisfy basically the mix of use? I mean, I think I would say it does. You know, you were able to get in some residential units. Obviously, you know, if we can get in more, that would be great. That's actually is a plus that I think everybody would support. I really do also think that the north end is probably the better location for, for these units because it is more of a residential side. And I like that it's connected to the bike path. So you know, if you have families with children, they're not running out directly into traffic. It's more of a slow, slow moving area, basically. And as far as the tower goes, I know that, you know, this is right now just massing. You're going to probably develop it a lot more further. I think what would help with connecting to the public would be to bring in some warmer elements down at the ground level closer to public spaces. I think that would, that would help greatly. But I also feel like studying the massing. And I do appreciate that resident Henry provided that massing study because actually that is something that I was kind of thinking in my head, if it was possible to, to kind of shift the tower a little bit. And not only would it create a more lower level in on Christie, but, but it would also maybe break up the monotonous of, of the tower. So that's just something that maybe I would like for your team to consider and to really study and, and further develop. As far as the, let me see here, the bonus points. I do also agree, sorry, I also agree with staff that we should probably provide some kind of amenity space for the residents and a rooftop space would be great. Not sure if I can comment on the bonus points either. And then if I have any other design issues. I think that was it. I think pretty much everybody else touched on everything I was thinking. Thank you again.
We'll make a second pass for anybody in case to get more questions or comments. So we won't, we won't end this right now, but I want to thank you guys for the work you've done. I appreciate everything you've done. You certainly did. What I requested was to put into some, some townhouses. And the reason I requested townhouses, and this might help the other commissioners to stand is by doing the two story townhouses rather than flats, you don't have to put in an elevator. The minute you put in an elevator, then you're, you know, you're adding costs and maintenance to the facility like this. So the reason I had mentioned townhouses, I knew they could just make individual townhouses and it would be kind of a done deal and it would be a lot more feasible anyway. But I mean, if you could, you know, make more units, of course, we're all going to be in support of that. I think the, the housing size at thirty nine square feet is really good. I know that you heard from others that you wanted to put in more smaller units, but I live in a thirteen hundred square foot house and it's really a decent sized. And I can see a family of four living in a, in a space like that, at least for some time, if not for a long period of time. I think the north location makes total sense. I think if we wanted to get a relationship, we just go up our own greenway between sixty fifth, sixty sixth and sixty seventh street and see the houses that come out onto that. I think the way we combat the light or the lack of lighting is looking at your examples is just really big windows, just put in some really large windows and you know, let whatever eliminated light is there flood in that space and that way. And it's going to be a good view once we, you know, do the city development. I think it's going to make a, a small, nice neighborhood. It's going to connect really well to the, to the public market. So I think that's good. I want to express my appreciation for you keeping your parking at or below our requirements. So we don't have to have that conversation and I, it just shows other developers that this can be done. The residential open space might be a problem for you guys because of how constrained it is. I just would like the commission to consider maybe a conditional use permit that if they do provide some outdoor space, but it doesn't meet our minimums that we take that into consideration that Christie Park is nearby, that we will have the corner of that area developed into some public open space, which I'll speak about in a minute. But that might be something we need to do because it might be hard to make sizable units that may not have outdoor individual space that meets our minimum requirements. So just think about that when it comes along the way. I, I understand what the commission is saying and I feel kind of the same way about the open space on the corner of Christian Showmount. I think it can work and the thing I think really makes it work is also with the redevelopment of fifty or fifty eight oh one across the street that will also come into redevelopment. They have to put in a half acre park over there. So we could align those two parts that are, that they kind of relate to each other. And if this space is designed with maybe some concrete planners, some thick spaces between the plaza and the street to give people kind of a feeling of protection and barrier. I think of that active space that you're looking at. I'm thankful that you're not putting in a medical facility, but you're leaving it open for ground for active space. We could do something like co working. I always liked the idea of a cafe, but how viable those are financially, who knows? But I could see sitting there for a cup of coffee because it's going to get morning sun. It's going to get, you know, sun most of the day. So, and my sensibility coming from more urban environment, I'm not so concerned about traffic as long as I feel a physical barrier between myself and the cars. So just looking at, at things like that, I think are good. Yeah, I think, you know, I, you guys really respected our request. You came at you, you thoughtfully placed these units where they make the most sense. I totally agree with what you're saying there. And if Maru, if you could bring up, I think it was page six on your thing. I just want to show what Ron Hemme has suggested in, in moving the tower. And I think it, it could be difficult for you, but I think it is viable. So looking at this image, whoops, you almost had it. It kind of gives us a glance of what that would look like. There you go. So not considering the townhouses at this level, but if this were your south elevation and we're coming from Shellmount down Christie, this is what we would see. And it's just a much more hospitable building. And I think basically looking at your plan, other than structural reasons, you could keep the ground floor, the first floor basically the same, keep it the same shape, keep everything in its location and just shift your tower back to that. Because we, from what we're hearing from the owners of parcel F, housing isn't viable there. That's why they're going to pay us to not put something there. So I think the tower fronting that property would make a lot more sense. And I think it would make people very, very happy. And I like just the simple perforated metal screen, you know, with the golden bridge on it. I, to, to come home and to see that as I approach my house, I, that would be really stunning. And I, I really would like that. And I think if there's a park right there on that street, I think it could be very, very welcoming and hospitable and, and very pleasing building height. You know, I, I don't understand the fear of fourteen stories to twelve stories. When you're at the ground level, you're not going to be able to tell whether the building is ten stories, fourteen stories or fifteen. I, I believe what people want to do by reducing the height is that reduces the amount of people the building can hold. And that means it reduces the amount of traffic. But I think whatever you need to build this, if people look at our general plan, this area is specifically earmarked for height. That's why we put in the general plan a hundred feet plus. So this is not out of character with the general plan. This is exactly the type of buildings that we involve in envision when doing the general plan. So I don't think the height is an issue. It's what is planned for the city in this neighborhood. It may not be exact content of what's here in the neighborhood now, but it is what is projected for the neighborhood in the general plan. So those are my comments and I appreciate what you guys have done. I think it's definitely taking shape and I really wish we could get it moving because I know it's going to take about two years to build this thing once we get it approved. If we get it approved. So I'll just make a real quick round of, Mr. Chief, did you think of your other comment or question?
Hey, I did. I had something about the north facing town home perspective and, and just thinking through the fact that the middle units would basically just have like one wall where windows would be possible. And I was just trying to think through if there are other examples of that in Emeryville. I think there are. I'd just be interested to, to know what that experience is like and make sure that it is actually livable. And then I thought of one other thing, which is just to ask the applicants if they'd like to respond to the alternative massing study and get their thoughts on feasibility.
Commissioner Keller, do you want to go through the rounds first or would you?
No, you go ahead because I think other, other commissioners would like to hear that too. So why don't you go ahead?
Certainly. And Mike, please chime in if I misspeak here for a second. But Commissioner Chafe, to, before we go on to the comments on the massing, just to touch on the experience for the residents who only have obviously one face of, of windows. It kind of ties to your question you had at first about why six and why not more? And, and the reason for putting six townhouses in or only being able to fit six in, in here is, as we mentioned in the presentations, the narrowest aspect of the, our narrowest property, property line that we have. And in taking into consideration the fact that there will only be one aspect of light, one of the things we wanted to be sure was that every single living room, so livable room, AKA bedrooms and the actual living room itself was facing the actual front of the building. And so when thinking up just the preliminary designs of these units, the width of each of these apartments would be about, I think, twenty five feet in width, which would allow you to have a, with walls, about ten and a half, eleven foot bedroom with at the front where you get natural light, rather than having to put some of these rooms recessed into the unit itself with you narrow them. Mike, did I do that well?
Yeah. I annoy you, architect. That was great. Alright, thank you. Perfect. And I think to, to address the alternative massing, I think the, the, we looked at numerous different orientations of the building when we began this process about a year ago. At the time, we looked at a scenario where the parking structure would be located along Christie. One of the initial comments we received in our design sort of thought process was that it might make more sense for that parking structure to be away from the street because it's a, a parking structure. And typically people don't necessarily love looking at parking structures. More importantly though, the, the access points off of, of Christie were one of the main kind of considerations and the need to put a lobby off of, of Christie Avenue for the access and pickup and drop off, which otherwise wouldn't have been able to have been on Shellmount. And when you shift the orientation of the building as proposed, the more natural location for that lobby would then be off of Shellmount. Whereas I think Mike highlighted in the presentation, we have a, you know, that sliver of our sites, which significantly limits the ability to put a curb cut in on, on Shellmount, let alone Shellmount just being a slightly busier street than Christie as it is. Now, with that said, I, I think it's, it's certainly something that we can take away and, and consider. I think we've heard the, the commentary a couple of times now in these study sessions dating back even to August about concerns around the, the presentation of the massing. And yes, it's a massing right now and we'll, we'll plan to design it to a much more detailed degree at the next stage. But we've heard that that's a key concern for a lot of the residents in the immediately surrounding area. So it's definitely one that we can, we can take away and reconsider. Mike, I don't know if there's anything else you, you'd want to add on, on that from an architectural standpoint with the design and potentially flipping the building a hundred and eighty degrees, just initially off the top of your head.
Well, I mean, I'll, I'll start by saying, of course, you know, everyone keeps talking about the design of this building and, and the, these are, these are diagrams, right? The, the design phase comes next. So we're, we're trying to figure out the best way to use this small and very irregular shaped site with very constrained access points. As Mike has mentioned, we talked about how parcel F controls a third of our southern boundary so that our, our, our access to Shellmount Way is very constrained. Our access to Christie is the best access for the site.
Our access to Christie is the best access for the site, but obviously Christie's a very busy street and we we understand that. When you look at the way that the lab and and office. Floors will work on the upper floors and the relationship of those floors to the elevator core. Which is kind of the soul of an office building that really wants to relate to a lobby location. And if you shift the tower to the east side of the site. You really make it very difficult for lobby access to work. By putting the parking on the east side of the site. You are taking a less attractive use and hiding it behind the building, but more importantly, from a site use perspective. You're you're creating more queuing space, which will help for traffic flow. Because you don't have cars coming directly, you know, down a parking ramp, you know, right onto the street. And you're able to put all of these lobby and associated uses, which need to be near the elevator core. Right there at the at the street face, which will then be able to take better. Advantage of the open space that we are going to create. And I just want to point out. When Maru noted earlier, we we had previously noted using some of the public right away as our open space in error. But we are not anymore. So all of the numbers that we're quoting for open space are all. On on the property within the boundaries. And so the extra additional. Space between our boundary and and the street corner is is in addition to and will of course be improved. As as part of our design, but do not count in in those numbers. But having having the tower closer to Christie. Will let all that space be associated with the amenities, so with the lobby, which needs to be. Near the elevator core, which needs to be in the center of the tower. And that that so that's why our diagrams show the tower. As we have it. For the last three sessions.
Commissioner Keller.
Yeah, go ahead, there's chair.
Yeah, can I just make a suggestion on that? Have you? So how I'm envisioning it is you leave. The first couple of floors how they are. So you leave the parking structure where it is. You leave the ground. Lobby and maybe two floors where they are and.
Mr. Can I interrupt you just a minute? Charlie, can I share my screen? Because I have this floor up and I was going to bring it up myself. And I think if we can have this up.
Sure, I had. You should have the ability to do that.
So I think this will help you, Mr. To explain that.
It will. Thank you. Yeah, so you would have everything basically be where it is, parking, nothing moves. And not necessarily flip the project, but shift the project. So if the tower is stacked like this. You would just shift it so that you have open space on Christie. So. Let me see if I could. Annotate here. So you would still have your open space here. You would still have your core where it is. But just it would, your tower would overlap. So this space here. Would still would be open on on one of the upper levels. So just something to consider. I think there is a way to do it. That doesn't require you to complete completely flip. Where the parking is and where the lobby is.
Thank you. That's exactly the point I was going to make as well. I don't think we need to even turn anything a hundred degrees. Just take your tower. The floors above the parking structure and move it to the east side of the building of the the parcel, leaving everything as best you can where it is. Even if your tower had to be a little wider to. Allow for your elevators to stay in the same place, you can make the tower wider and maybe drop it down two floors like people like and pick up your square footage that way. I I think that. You know, I'm not an architect and I am certainly not a structural engineer. So I know that there could be complications, but I think if you just leave the. The whole parking structure, all five four plates that are there as is, and just build your tower. On that eastern side and go up from there. It it seems doable. And I mean, you know, Mr. Hemmy is an architect and he seems to feel that, you know, with some work, it can be done. But I just think that, you know, you're going to get a lot more support from the community if the building is not right on the sidewalk there. And I think it's it's a viable option. So that was a comment I was going to make as well.
Just to clarify, Chair Keller, this drawing that you're showing here, I believe is a previous.
It is. Yeah, yeah. It basically the four point. But I mean, I think that the space that they're not using for clinic and they're they're using for active ground space. I don't think that would change. Again, it's what is in those four places doesn't matter. It's just that we're seeing that the four plates of this ground level could stay as they are. As far as we can see, or very, very close to this. So that that's just I agree with the voice chair and I think I agree with that, you know, Mr. Hammy and the other residents. I think it is something that's viable and I think you would really get a lot of support. I'm doing that. Any other clarifying questions? Did we answer everything? I I agree. The mix of use I'm fine, especially if you do the six townhouses and then you make the corner of that building. A public active space, whether it's a, you know, co-working place, a cafe, or wherever else you can come up with, a bike shop. You know, something else. But if you if that ground or active space on the corners there and you make that park inviting and feeling safe and you have the six townhouses. Along with your lab building, I think that's a mixed use that I'm satisfied with. The bonus points, I can't think of anything myself. I think staff offered some vague ideas. I think maybe play off of those. Let's see which ones you come up with and. I think everything's, if you guys have any questions of us or clarifications, we're happy to answer that staff. If you need anything else from us, please let us know.
I think we're good. Miro, do you have any further need for information? All right.
Okay, we'll see. No more comments and no questions from the applicant or staff. I will go ahead and close this item and thank you once again for your work and look. Forward to seeing what you come up with and hopefully bring us a plan we can approve and get going. Thanks, guys.
Our hope as well. Thank you very much. We appreciate the the input. And we've got some more work to do, but I think this is a positive step forward.
Definitely. Thank you. And before we go on to the next item, I'm going to call for a break, maybe for five or seven minutes. Let's say we come back at maybe a few minutes before nine.
Okay.
Okay, and Charlie, you're here. Even though your camera's on, I heard you speaking. So I think we can call the meeting back into session. There you are. And we can go on to item nine point three, the mass timber. Can we have your staff report, please?
We do. I'm going to share my screen. I think this is the right one. Yeah. So thank you for for considering this item. I have a few slides about. What mass timber is, what its advantages are. And as you'll see, we're, this is a study session to talk about. A proposal to include it as a category of community benefit in the development bonus point system in the planning regs. So mass timber, just as a as a initial. Introduction. It's it's they're large wood products that are typically panelized and engineered. But they may may include solid sawn heavy timber elements. And we do address that in. Our proposed definition right now. This is actually a real picture in in Vancouver of a building where they. They copied that old that old photo. I love this one. So there are there are several main types. Blue lamb, a lot of people have heard of cross laminated timber. Is similar with differences. Then there's nail laminated timber. Dowl laminated timber, mass plywood panels and decking. So just that's just an overview of the types of material that are called mass timber. It has benefits that I'll go into a little bit more, which include reduced greenhouse gas emissions, both. In the manufacture of the product and in the energy used to manufacture and transport the the product. Reduced construction time and cost, improved quality of life, improved opportunities for forest management. And one that has become more more relevant in recent years is the possibility for reduction in. In problems with overseas supply chains because this can be produced domestically. So the environmental benefits. Are many and they have to do a lot with, well, with building stock. The global building stock is expected to double. Before twenty fifty and building construction represents. Eleven percent plus or minus of energy related. Greenhouse gas emissions. Traditional materials use a lot more energy to manufacture steel and. Our experts can correct my numbers on this because there is some variability in different sources, but steel uses five times the energy. Then wood does to manufacture. To get to market and concrete is twenty four times. And in addition, whoops, in addition, wood sequesters carbon. It not only produces less in energy use and and transportation, but it sequesters carbon, takes it out of the atmosphere. So this is, this is one of many. Displays that show essentially. If you manage your forest correctly, you can grow grow an acre of forest. It not only does not release any carbon. Dark side equivalent or greenhouse gases, but it absorbs it out of the atmosphere. Construction benefits include, also are many, include just in time fabrication and job site delivery. So a lot of the work is done off site. And that makes for a speedier and more efficient construction. Roughly twenty five percent faster. Reduced construction traffic by up to ninety percent. It's lighter framing than steel, so it requires less concrete if concrete is used. Reduced job site noise and. Reduced jobs, job site traffic, which I've already mentioned. Quality of life benefits include insulation properties. It improves air quality by moderating humidity. The aesthetics can be very welcome and there's a whole wing of. Of investigation that shows some studies show lower stress levels for occupants, better quality of life. In a natural material environment, not to mention the impact on a community of faster and cleaner construction. So this is a burgeoning field. This, as of March twenty twenty two, thirteen eighty, one thousand three hundred and eighty four large projects are either in design, which are the the light colored ones. Or construction has started or the or the project is built. I had, I replaced this with a slide I had from June twenty twenty where the number was nine hundred. So. It's it's growing fast and the standard is getting there, but we still need to grow the market and the education and training for. For contractors, builders and tradespeople. So the twenty twenty one International Building Code added tall wood buildings to its code. The California Building Standards Commission approved an intervening code supplement. So they wanted to get it into California code ahead of the next cycle. So that. Became, that became part of California code last July. And that sort of let us move forward on it. And the Sustainability Committee of the City of Emeryville, which is. City Council Committee. Has proposed adding a category of community benefits to the city's development bonus system. And just as a refresher, there are six categories of community benefits. Currently, public open space, zero net energy construction, public improvements, utility undergrounding. Additional family friendly units and small business assistance funding in addition to a flexible benefit. So this would be. An additional type of benefit. As as proposed. And there was a lot of interest in at council and in the Sustainability Committee to make this scalable. So it wasn't all or nothing. And so the proposal we have here is you could get up to fifty points, development bonus points. On this kind of calculation, the main focus of this would be on on decking flooring. Eight points per ten percent of total internal floor area constructed with mass timber. You could get additional points, two points per ten percent for framing for the for the vertical elements. And we have. We have a definition here that that tries to nail down what it is we mean and what we don't mean. And the calculations would be are proposed to be based on total internal floor area excluding parking and loading. Because the engineering doesn't. Doesn't allow that easily at this point. So some clarifications and amendments that have been discussed. These are just some of them for potential discussion tonight. Should there be a minimum height? For buildings receiving these development bonus points. How do we dress concrete used as a topping slab over a wood deck, which is something that we would want to discourage? And we we may want to clarify the definition of deck to include the roof deck and exclude a slab on grade. Those are questions that have come up with our experts and with the committee. To date. So I do have some experts here, at least I at least one I saw. Bryce Tanner from ARUP, who is an expert in the structural and technical issues related to mass timber. Francis Yang may be here from ARUP. And she's an expert in the environmental impacts and Mia Kita Hara from Stop Waste is. An expert in the regional efforts on lower carbon construction. Overall. So. Yeah, so that's what I've got. And if you can direct questions to me or to any of my experts who are present.
Very good. So Charlie, we're not going to have any applicant. Presentation, obviously. So we're going to have questions of staff, which I'll open up and just submit it. But I wanted to find out after the question period, do we want to open it up for public comment?
I think you should, yes.
Okay, so right now that we'll just see if there are any questions that the commission has staff or the experts. Commissioner, go ahead and raise your hand if anyone has any questions. Okay, Commissioner Getsoni.
Two questions. One, you were talking about people possibly putting concrete slots over this. And I was curious as to why somebody would want to do that. What would they normally be trying to do when they do that?
Yeah, I I can speak to that. There's two possible or common reasons anyway. One is, and the most common really is for acoustics. Particularly if you have a residential type of use and you have people walking with high heels above and you get this sort of loud heel drop sounds and that might be a lower frequency. Sometimes you. Want to add mass. To to address that. There are there are other ways to doing it. Not necessarily concrete is is the only way. It's it's relatively common way to do it. You can also increase the thickness of the floor. And and I I would concede that in in certain situations, you you do. You know, you need to do something about the acoustics of it. So it there should be some some tolerance for putting some amount of concrete, but but we need to try to. Limit that so that so that it's not excessive. Because at some point, you you're not doing anything better for the environment.
Yeah. And my second question is Nancy, you mentioned that it has insulating properties. So. Does that translate into moderately or significantly more energy efficient buildings? Or what can you tell us about that?
Bryce or Francis, you want to take that one?
And so.
And so there's actually two elements that where it's shown to, you know, be beneficial. One is that if it's, if you're talking about like the perimeter columns and how, when the facade frames into it, they, there could, you could have thermal bridging because of the metals. But if with timber, it's with wood, it's not as conductive of a material. So we reduce thermal bridging and then, or even the, the slab that even like, you know, like concrete and steel are more conductive than, than timber. So, and then also just the, the prefab aspect of it. If you also have mass timber walls, then the, all the construction tonnage is much tighter, tend to be much tighter. It's CNC mill. And there's just less kind of gaps and air leakage. So those are, to my understanding, the two primary ways that they can really enhance the performance of a, the thermal performance of your, of your building compared to, you know, like a steel and concrete systems.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Very good. Commissioner Simmons.
Thanks, Chair Keller. I guess my first question is making this very relevant, Emeryville, are there examples of mass timber being used for everybody's favorite type of development project, biotech lab space?
Bryce or Francis, are you aware of that?
So I know that we've had our engineers, some of our teams in different offices have studied it, but as Bryce pointed out, timber is more flexible of a material and, and lighter and lab spaces tend to need really stiff floors. So I think it's, they've been challenged that way and, and they also like call, you know, one way is to put in more columns and walls, but I think a lot of labs, this is also like to be pretty open and taller heights, taller floor heights. Yeah, and Bryce, do you want to add to that at all?
Yeah, I mean, there, there are certainly different kinds of lab applications. Some of them are practically like office buildings, you know, with, with a light lab application. And those are probably amenable to, to a mass timber. If it's, if it's a serious lab space, often they have very sensitive equipment that, that can't tolerate very much movement of the floor. You know, much lower than human perception. So, so that's when, when you have to be, be very careful with, with this kind of structure.
But I, I believe that there's, there's a building that our Chicago office is actually trying to design right now where they've identified like, you know, the sensitive program area and they've decided they really need to. They're not going to really be able to build that with, with mass timber, but they've identified like some surrounding program that doesn't need, yeah, that isn't so sensitive. And, and they're, they're really eager to try to carry mass timber design forward in those areas.
And like consider, of course, wall spaces as, as, as being mass timber to keep the floor as something else or, or the roof.
Thank you. And I guess my other question is, so we had a presentation on this topic maybe four years ago when I was on the housing committee. What's, is this something where, yeah, and we haven't seen anything brought to us in Emeryville yet? Is this something where the industry just has to mature or bonus points enough to actually make a mass timber project happen? What are we, you know, is it going to, it's going to blossom in two years or we're never going to hear about it again? What's your, what's your feeling?
And if you have, have newer knowledge, I, I guess my, my sense is that it is, it is taking off slowly. Certainly there have been more incentives provided by various jurisdictions. It's very sort of random. Some, some jurisdictions are very supportive and have provided some incentives. Others haven't just been as much. I think we'll see an acceleration though, because of the latest code provisions, because that has been the, the major barrier. Anytime when we try to, to put a project like this on the boards, the first thing that the potential developer is concerned about is, is the schedule and knowing that you have to somehow get DV variants from, from, you know, that the, the code, the local jurisdiction makes it practically impossible to, to have a reasonable paced project. So now that, that's, that is coming away. I think we'll see a lot more. And of course it's a, it's a, it's a two way street. You, you need to have some demand in order to have the people, you know, the familiarity in the industry and, and the supply of the product that, that you can, that you can, you know, do the, the construction with a reasonable cost. So, so that, that will come along with the, with the demand.
Anyone else? Commissioner Chief.
Thank you, Chair Keller. And thanks for the presentation. I think I'm still trying to wrap my head around the, the different aspects at play here. So basically why we need to incentivize this through bonus points. So I think what I'm hearing is that now it's part of code. So there's not as much of a hang up in terms of the approvals, but that we wouldn't necessarily expect to see a lot of these projects coming to us naturally because it's not commonplace yet. So it would take a really special developer or special project in order to bring it to us without bonus points available. Is that basically right?
That's, that's a good basic explanation. It's, it's, if, if you're going to take a little extra time to get on that learning curve from your designers and your engineers and your fabricators, your, your builders, we want to make that worth it for you. So we want to give you this, this benefit to help, help the industry make that move. It, it could well be something that is not useful in a few years for that reason. But right now, given the environmental benefits and community benefits of it, it, this, the sustainability committee and the council have really indicated that they think it's worth incentivizing to help nudge the market.
Okay, that's really helpful. And then, I mean, is there a scenario where Emeryville could eventually require it in certain conditions?
I don't know. What do you, do you have any thoughts?
Going to actual requirements, I think you would expect pushback from other material trades.
Yeah.
Whereas incentives seem to be in a space where there's, yeah. You know, they kind of let it go and more.
Right. So that's a political question.
Yeah, I, I would like to see that, that at some point we don't have to specifically incentivize a specific kind of building material or process, but rather make, you know, put a cost on carbon. And that will naturally select the, the kinds of, of things that are appropriate for, for the development. You know, that's what I think the long term ought to be.
Okay, great. And do we have examples of other types of opportunities for getting development or bonus points that have eventually sunsetted that we've taken off the, the menu?
I think that's more a question for me. Yes, the bonus point system has evolved greatly over the year and Chair Keller probably remembers when the bonus point menu of potential development bonus categories, community benefit categories. I think it had something like 18 items on it at one point. And the council several years ago decided that that was too many. They kind of felt like they were giving some things away, things that developers should be doing anyway, or were doing anyway. They didn't want to be giving them points for that. I don't remember the details of all of it, but I do remember that they greatly reduced the number of develop available options down to just the six that we have now, plus the flexible community benefit. So there used to be more.
You know, and I would add that this is some, this is category that could evolve, stay, but evolve. So to lower carbon concrete and then to, you know, each new beneficial technology as it needs a push.
Great. That's really helpful. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I just have a question that actually is a rather deeper question. It's something I've wondered for a long time, a whole, I totally liked the idea and I, I really think it's a great way to go. My question is, is with the growth that we're seeing in the industry and how long it takes for trees to grow, how do we create enough mass timber to do to reach these goals that we want? I, you know, we're, we're losing forests due to death. It takes a long time to grow trees. We're losing space to grow trees. So how do we, how do we grow enough trees to meet the demand that we're, we're hoping to create? I guess is my question.
Yeah. So, so actually right now, the the, the, the issue isn't it isn't raw material supply. Okay, there's, there's plenty of trees and forests that could be extracted. The, the barrier is that there's not enough value seen associated with extracting the trees to go and get them in the harder to extract places, which is where the forest fires and such are happening. You know, like steep slopes or few access roads and but what, the reason the forest industry is actually excited about master is because these are higher value products. And it actually provides more financial means to go and pull out that, that growth that would otherwise be, yeah, dying through infestation or you know, creating fire hazards, drought and yeah. So yeah, that's the, I've been in lot, especially the, the architecture design community has posed that question a lot and it's, it's created a lot of conversation the last few years with, you know, forest service and forest managers. And, and that's what we understand to be the situation now.
So they believe that there's room, there's enough product to meet the demand if it grows to where we'd like to see it grow.
Yeah, yeah, they, they, they don't think that, yeah, they this isn't, this is actually, it would be actually hopeful for keeping forests as forests as opposed to selling land that isn't seen to be producing a value for it to be like, you know, if they for it to be productive land and as opposed to turn it over to developer and then losing that forest land with something else.
And overall, how do environmentalists feel about this, about creating roads into virgin forests or places that have burned down? You know, you have to develop the roads for trucks to get in and stuff. So how does the environmental community look at this, you know, harvesting the more trees and et cetera?
Yeah, honestly, it's, it's actually gotten kind of become mixed. There's a certain portions of our ala community that seem to understand and, and are supportive, but there, there's also other parts of environmental, they, they've actually kind of created some factions within the environmental communities. Yeah. So I can't say that they are, you know, a hundred percent agreed. There's, but we, but it does seem to have created some advocates and some who are, are just generally against touching our forests at all.
Yeah, but there is some support in the environmental community.
I would ask at another point here, we're, we're not talking about old growth trees. One of the nice things about the manufactured lumber as opposed to the traditional heavy, large sun members is that you can create them from, from actually quite young trees. And you can also create them from trees that have already essentially died. They're standing dead forests because of all the insect infestations in various places. So it's, it's, it's a wave of you know, you, you don't have to keep on going into virgin forests.
And that's really good to hear. And that's what I was wondering. I have friends that live up near Murphy's and Arnold and there was this huge swath of dead timber that they went in and cleaned out. I mean, there was a massive cleaning up and I don't know what happened to that wood. I had never heard it's usable.
Hopefully.
Yeah, yeah. So it's good to know that it is usable, that, you know, that can be used in some form or from so, because we're, we do have a lot of dead trees in, in the Sierras and it'd be nice if we could, you know, not lose those totally, but actually make use of them and not harvest, you know, healthy trees. So how long does it take for a, you know, an acre or whatever to grow to maturity to where it can be used? Are we looking at five years, 10 years?
So we've heard like the industrial types of forests, they like to harvest around 25. But we've also heard 40 is kind of more maybe, maybe a, a, average of kind of family and the big giant industrial forests and and then there's also been studies that have said like, if that could be extended even more, then there's greater carbon sequestration that, you know, can be in the forest. There oh, I did want to mention that it sounds like you would be really interested to know up in Portland, there's a pretty neat research going on because Portland has a deconstruction ordinance. And so they have all of this, you know, reps on timber from residential housing and residential units and then not really having a great place for it, but, but it's been deconstructed, not, you know, demolished. So it's can totally be reused. So OSU is doing some studies and how to make that into CLT deck. And yeah, so.
That's pretty awesome. And I think the more we promote it and use it, we'll get a lot more research and a lot more new ideas like that. So that's great. Okay. Are there any other questions? Okay, we will take it back and see if there are any public comments at this time.
I do have one online speaker card on this item, Chair Keller, and also I see one raised hand among the attendees. So I will call on the attendee first, Ruchu Rathod. You may go ahead.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for opening this very interesting topic to the public. I'm an architect and a sustainability consultant living in Emeryville and I have three questions. One is on a conceptual level, has the, has the team evaluated the weighted of these points versus other points being offered currently to, to any developers developing in the Emeryville area? The second one, the second question is that if one of the benefits that we have are, is net zero energy, would we want to expand this particular benefit to call, to be termed as embodied carbon analysis and also include, let's say concrete insertion, carbon insertion into concrete or, or a calcified aggregates or void formers, any of those that reduce amount of concrete being used and also any, any of the measure embodied carbon or reducing low carbon options that are available in steel rather than just focusing on timber. Those are my two main questions. I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought on the third one, but yeah, that's it for this evening.
Great. Thank you very much. And Charlie, a speaker card?
Yes, let me bring it up.
Do you want to devote this speaker first? Do you want to devote this speaker first?
Let me see. Sorry. All right, this is Rod Henme again. And he says, good evening, Planning Commission. I am Rod Henme, Christie Avenue resident and Design Director for HKIT Architects, a leading affordable housing firm. I am familiar with mass timber technology and its environmental benefits and generally support its use. However, I'm speaking against this proposal to provide bonus points to developers for using mass timber. The reason I oppose this proposal is seeing the impacts of greatly heightened and increased buildings utilizing other bonus points in Emeryville. I believe it is not good public policy to allow buildings to be much taller, denser bulkier, et cetera, through the inclusion of bonuses. After all, the basic zoning regulations have been thoughtfully developed with public input and to exceed the regulations should be rare. In this case, a building can be much taller and impact the urban environment and quality of pedestrian life through a construction method that may not be visible and provides an abstract benefit of environmental litigation. In other words, the building harms the urban environment in return for environmental benefits. I do not think this is a good approach to urban design. Second reason I oppose this idea is that I think it is unnecessary to do so. I predict the use of mass timber will be utilized more in the near future as shown by its increasingly common use in the Pacific Northwest and even in New York City. This ordinance will be unnecessary as developers find that mass timber will be utilized. Sorry, timber saves money and the use of concrete from the use of concrete and steel. Already affordable housing developers are starting to explore its use as an alternative for mid-rise construction. Finally, if the commission should support this proposal, at least the ordinance needs to be more tightly written so that there are no loopholes and clever use of its measures to acquire bonus points without really providing the environmental benefits. For example, there needs to be a minimum number of stories to be eligible for the bonus. Typical wood frame construction can be used for up to seven to eight stories with five stories of type three construction over two stories of type one, type one base. The environmental benefits of mass timber versus standard wood frame is not explored in the analysis and is much less if any. Therefore, the ordinance should not allow mass timber to replace standard wood frame construction. Mass timber should only be used to replace steel and concrete construction. The minimum building height should be nine stories to qualify. Thank you for your consideration. I would just like to clarify one point on Mr. Henme's comments, which is that this proposal would not allow buildings to be any taller than what the zoning already allows. We're just talking about the bonus height that's already available using any of the various development bonus categories that are available. This would just be one of the ways that they could get that additional height.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that. I was thinking the same thing. It's not that we're exceeding the regulations. This is just adding an element or a possibility to gain bonus points, which we're often asking for.
That's correct.
Yeah. So I thank you for clarifying that. I don't, I appreciate that. So that seems to wrap up the public comment. Notice speaker cards or emails?
Oh, let's see. Double check real quick. I see no more hands raised in the attendees and I see no more online comment cards.
Very good. We will close the public comment period and bring it back to the commission and commissioner comments. The commission needs some.
Yeah, I find this intriguing. I think it's interesting. In terms of thinking about bonus points for something like this, I think maybe it might be better to take a more general approach and to just evaluate the environmental efficiency of all construction techniques that might be used and weigh that into some sort of bonus thing so that we're not just going for one thing, but that we're encouraging environmental efficiency all the ways that they can be. And if there, if that's a feasible thing to do, I don't know, but if it were, it might be, you know, able to say, okay, you're using a 70% more efficient technique here and that's worth something.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Chief.
Thank you. And thanks so much for all of the, the background on this. Definitely learned a lot about something I was curious about. So I think, I think this is great in theory. It's great because it uses forest products that can't be used in other ways. Along with having carbon storage benefits, I think I would really emphasize the air pollution mitigation possibility from encouraging this. I mean, California, we have so much excess forest product that needs to go somewhere and often it gets burned either intentionally or unintentionally, and that creates air pollution, especially if it's unintentional, meaning forest fires, because that's unmitigated. You know, it's, there's no control on the air pollution when it's released. Even if it is controlled through bioenergy or something, there's still going to be some residual air pollution. Here we have the opportunity to keep it in a structure for a long time, hopefully, without having any of that negative impact. I think my only hesitation is that by creating a set of bonus point opportunities with this, we're basically like in my mind, I'm kind of lining it up against the other possibilities for bonus points. And I, I don't really have a sense yet of, with the percentages and the allocations that you've suggested, how that the environmental impacts from that would measure against the net zero, for example. And I'm totally fine to trust you on those calculations, but that's just kind of the thinking that's going on in my head. So I just encourage you to think about it as a potential draw away from some of those other categories and make sure that it sits on the same level, that it's basically on par in terms of the environmental impacts that we deem most important and that we're not giving an easy way out by introducing this new one. So thank you. Hope it moves forward.
Thank you. And Commissioner Simons.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. Not a lot of comments. Excited to see our first mass timber application in 2023.
Right on. Bryce Tremendous.
Um, I am also very excited about this. I've been obsessively kind of following the different projects in Canada that use it. And one of the architects that uses it a lot is Michael Green. And to kind of answer Commissioner Simons' question about, are there any labs that are doing this? Actually, the firm I work for, we are doing our first mass timber lab. And we are partnering up with Michael Green. It's, it's going to be down in Santa Barbara. And so it is a low rise. It's not high rise. So, and it, and it is a pretty large campus. So yeah, I guess we'll have more information once that gets built. But yeah, I, I'm super excited for this. I, I think aesthetically, they're beautiful and also it's a really great way to to sustainably start building or buildings or, or facilities that we, we live in. So I am in full support of, you know, incentivizing developers to, to use this by giving them some bonus points. Yep. And that's, that's it for me.
Very good. Thank you. And Commissioner Jim.
Thank you for the presentation. I just have a quick question. What is the maximum height that is physical with, built with this material?
In code, it's 18 stories. In practice, Bryce, look like you.
Well, I, I studied in our firm, studied a 30-story building, not, it was, it was a theoretical study as opposed to something that anyone was going to build right away, but is certainly possible to go, to go quite high with it.
That's, that's pretty interesting. And what is his span, the maximum span?
Typical spans are, you know, 20 feet or, or, you know, 24 feet for, for CLT type product. You can go, of course, a lot longer with glue lamb. It's, it's certainly less span than, than steel at least. So that's one of the trade offs that to consider.
Really interesting. Okay, perfect. This is an exciting proposal. I hope this doesn't have any relationship with the deforestation in Amazon. And it's very exciting to see happening in Emeryville. And I think as one of the decisions says, like, you know, nine floors is, is good to have that in mind or 10 floors. And I think we need to be more cautious about our points. You're easily giving like the points, maybe we need to make it tighter. So have the timber plus have this public space, open a space plus something else. But this is not for this discussion, I think. But thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And thank you for the presentation. I, I, I support this idea. And hearing the public comments and Commissioner Giedtson said, I think mass timber is a unique building type. So I think incentivizing this type over other lightweight concrete or other mixes of concrete is, it makes sense because you do a whole building out of mass timber and it's, it's kind of a whole unique, different kind of way of building. So I think for us to incentivize that and to get these kind of buildings in Emeryville is really good. It may eventually become so mass popular that we don't have to incentivize it, that we remove it. I mean, our, the whole idea of our laws is to make them flexible and valuable to the times. So I think, you know, doing the mass timber for bonus points now is good. I mean, we're always, I think we're always looking, we, we were asked tonight for bonus points for the 250th project and no one here could give anybody. No one could give the project that they're, oh, use this or use that. I don't think we are overusing our bonus points. I think we need more to get more, I mean, it's 150%, like, so someone needs 100, this is only half. And they may not even get the 50 points if they're not meeting the, the thresholds that we've set. So I think that's a well thought out plan. I think it's something that needs to be incentivized because it is a unique part. I can see four-story building being mass timber because someone wants very large floor plates. So that's something you wouldn't do under stick construction with two-by-fourths. So I think if someone wants to build a four-story building, that's an office building that has huge floor plates, they want to use mass timber rather than steel and concrete, I think we should incentivize that. So I think my concern was, do we have the trees to support doing this? And hearing that the, they can actually use damaged trees, infested trees really makes me feel good that maybe we're creating a business and way to use those trees that would otherwise go to a biomass, you know, facility or just be burnt in huge piles. So I think it's, I think it's a good program. We probably still need to work out the nuts and bolts, but I definitely support the, the idea of making this a, a bonus point category. Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll go ahead and wrap this up and move on to Commissioner comments. Is staff okay? Have we got everything you need or anything to go further?
Well, the idea is to come back for a vote on this at the next meeting. So I guess what I'd like to clarify is that we, 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 meaning the people who, the experts would like to clarify a few of those things like about the, the concrete on flooring and about maybe the height, a, a minimum height that we would do. So I want to clarify that, that it would be okay for us to work on that in the interim and come back with the, with the comments addressed to the extent that we can when we come back for a vote.
I think that's reasonable, but I think, you know, for myself to give a direction, I think what you guys are proposing in the writing up a certain percent of the percent of the building is fast timber, then you get a percent of the points. So I think that's good. I would really like to encourage the minimum amount of non-timber, whether it's concrete or steel, that understand that they need to do those. I mean, I, I live in a building that's all concrete floors and ceilings and we, if we redo our smart service and we have to put in an insulator to, to deaden the noise. So I would want to see if there's a way to, you know, do something, creating space between the floors so that it, and insulate that rather than using concrete. But you guys are the experts. So I would just like to see that, you know, they get bonus points that they're using the absolute minimum of concrete and steel or other materials that they, and they would really have to justify those uses. So when you write the policy, make sure, you know, and if they're using, such as the speaker said, if they're using a type of concrete that is lower in carbon and makes, you know, a use of recycled materials or something, maybe that, you know, can be taken into consideration as well. But that's just my thoughts is I think, I think the way you guys are headed are fine, but I think that if it's going to be mass timber building and it's going to get points, it needs to be mass timber.
I think we've gotten a lot of good valuable input from the commission's comments tonight, and I think we have enough information to be able to develop a proposal to bring back for the commission's consideration at the next meeting. Do you agree, Nancy?
I do. And I appreciate all the, the thought and and consideration that went into this. And I, I look forward to bringing back a proposal that addresses all the, all the things that we've discussed.
I'm so glad.
I really, really want to thank Francis and Bryce for being here at 9:45 and providing the technical information that we really needed to discuss this.
Yeah, I appreciate your time and theirs as well. Any, anything else from the commission before we let people go home or finish the night? Very good. Thank you. We'll close this item and move on to Commissioner comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So are there any commissioner comments? Commissioner Dram, are you waving goodbye or do you have a comment?
That was a good one.
Okay, well, if I have seen correctly, we have no comments, then we can adjourn. Oh, go ahead, Commissioner Chee.
I was just gonna say, I thought Commissioner Simons might have had a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sure. I was a little hangry before I snuck my dinner in while I was off video there. Oh, it just, it seems like there are a bunch of boulders put in Hollis and Fortia in front of our future art center. I was wondering how the city decided to do that. Seems like it's sort of a planning thing. So, so am I welcome. I'll ask about it.
I will say I noticed those for the first time today when I was walking to get my lunch and then and I don't know what resulted in that, but I can look into it and let you know.
Perfect. Thanks, Charlie.
I forgot that you had that question early on. Okay, anyone else? All righty, then we will adjourn this meeting at 9:47 and I thank everyone for their work.
Thank you.
Meeting on May 16th.
See you.
Thank you.